All right. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go ahead and get started. Would you mind getting us started with figuring out if we have quorum here?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloe?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela? Councilmember Chenier? Is expected momentarily. Councilmember Guerra, let me know he would be a few minutes late. Councilmember Jennings?
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Here.
Mayor Steinberg? Is expected momentarily.
So, Vice- Great, thank- What was that, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, we need to start with the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance. Maybe we could ask Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Jennings, do you have both of those handy? Would you be able to do that for us?
I think I can do that.
All right, thank you.
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisan people, the Southern Madu people, the Valley and Plain Mywok, Patquin, Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance, would you please salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Jennings. You did a great job. Perfect. All right, Madam Clerk, you want to get us started there? Actually, you know what? Before we, before you call the first item, Councilmember Vang, are you on the call?
I am.
I know you wanted to do a quick acknowledgement. This isn't officially on the agenda, but I know you wanted to do a quick acknowledgement and about the importance of this month and what it means to some folks in your community. And I know you have big plans for next year, so you want to, do you want to say-
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to say, I know later on this month, we're going to do a resolution celebrating Asian American Pacific Heritage History Month. But on May 14th, this past weekend, was also Mong American Day. And the reason why May 14th is really significant because it was the last airbase that was lifted in terms of the Mong refugees. And so, it was a really amazing day. Oak Grove actually celebrated Mong American Day. And I realized we didn't have one in the city of Sacramento. So, working with the community to make sure that we do that next year, I had to pass a resolution to celebrate Mong American, Mong American Day, but just wanted to preview that. And for everyone who's watching right now, I want to wish all of you a great Mong American Day as well. It was on May 14th, but we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that today. And so, thank you so much, Vice Mayor, for that.
We'll be looking forward to the celebration you put together for us next year on May 14th. Councilmember Vang, I can't, can't wait to be there. I know it will be really fun. So, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yeah, yeah.
I would hate to have to wait till next year in order to acknowledge this important day. If it's okay with Councilmember Vang, why can't we put it on the agenda for next week and still acknowledge it even though the date of the 14th has gone past?
It's okay with me. The mayor's late. We can do whatever we want, you guys.
I think we should honor it this year and also prepare to do even a better job next year. But, you know, I just want to put that out there because that would be my preference if we could.
I'll second that, Councilmember Jennings.
I think Coffee agrees.
I say if we can do it right now, why wait till next year?
I totally agree. Let's do-
Every positive move for our city should be utilized at its fullest capacity, especially during these, during these times.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll, we'll work with the city teams to figure out how we can make that happen. So, thank you so much.
We can just do a resolution to bring forward next week since-
Councilmember Vang, you got the hard and hustle. So, there's no doubt in my mind by next week, you have multiple resolutions ready to go, so.
Oh, my gosh.
It might be too much time for you, knowing you, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Colleen.
Vice Mayor, did you indicate that Mr. Mayor might not be here right now?
He's running a little late. He'll be here in a moment.
Should we wrap up our budget for next year quickly right now and vote on it and get it over with?
Or like vote to paint City Hall purple? Does anyone have any really good suggestions right now while he's there? Okay, I digress. Madam Clerk, help me. Help, I mean, what's next?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a special presentation recognizing the Planning Academy, and we do have staff member Laura Toller.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Laura Toller, and I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. And I have the privilege of spending my Monday evenings with this year's 40 Planning Academy participants as the staff lead. They're an incredible group of people, deeply committed to their communities, curious, thoughtful, genuinely interested in making Sacramento a better place. I want to thank them for their commitment, not just to this course, but to our city. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce one of this year's Planning Academy participants to say a few words about his experience. Abram Diaz is the policy director for the nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California, and he was a great contributor to our class this year. So, I'll turn it over to you, Abram, for just a minute. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laura, and thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers and Vice Mayor. I really appreciate the chance to talk with everyone here today. I'll be brief. I live in downtown Sacramento at the Mill Neighborhood, and I'm going to be proudly speaking with you as part of the 20th class of the Sacramento Planning Academy. And over the last 20 years, as you know, our city is obviously full of passionate people driven to help make the communities a welcoming, fun, and safe place for everybody. And I'll begin with the community-oriented planning process. And the Planning Academy has been an amazing, unique opportunity to empower Sacramento residents to shape these efforts alongside the council and city staff. And we know that Sacramento has benefited from 20 years of educating citizens through the academy. And I want to thank you for your commitment to the program over the last two decades and during the COVID-19 pandemic. Our class this year was super diverse. We had representatives from across the city, from Latomis, Oak Park, Midtown, South Sacramento. We had business owners, students, and community activists. And our reasons for joining the program were as diverse as the people in it. Some of us wanted to help build equity into the planning process to be a better voice for the homeless and underserved communities, or to support just a green, walkable, and transit-friendly city. And in the end, we're all just motivated by the same ideas, and many of you are, to ensure Sacramento is a world-class city for our families, children, and future Sacramentoans to enjoy. We really appreciate it being part of this year's cohort, and especially like to thank our excellent program manager, Laura Toller, along with all the other candidates and speakers we had. And just thank you all so much for the opportunity to talk about this, and we look forward to working with you in service to our city of Sacramento. Thank you all so much.
Very good. Nice work being the spokesman. Appreciate it. The more people that go through the planning program, the better off we are as a city because the more information folks have, the more help we get, and we appreciate it. So, all right. What else do you have on your program here for us? Laura?
That's it.
Okay, did you want to run through the names really quick?
I think I don't have them in front of me, so we won't.
All right.
There's 40 people, so we won't do that tonight.
All right, we won't do that. All right. Well, we congratulate all 40 of them, thank them very much for their participation in the, in the planning program. It really is a big deal when people do the City Management Academy or Planning Academy. It is very helpful to us. And several people who serve on this size now or have served on this size in the past got their start in one of those, you know, Monday night classes. So, we appreciate it. It's a good, it's a good launchpad. All right, Madam Clerk, I see a couple hands up from the public.
I do. I have David Adams. David, you're speaking on this special presentation?
Yeah, I'm actually, I don't know what's going on tonight, but I, I live at the corner of Seventh and H, right behind the county jail. And I'm upset with the city because they, they approved the-
Mr. Adams, Mr. Adams, I'm sorry to cut you off, but this item right here is to congratulate people who are in the Planning Academy. I think maybe you would like to speak on the, on a different item. Can I ask you to hold off for a second?
Sure, sure. No problem, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Councilmember Vang, do you want to make a comment?
I did. I just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulations to all the 40 folks that are part of the Planning Academy. Also want to give a shout out to District 8 resident Jeff Solomon, who's part of the Medeview Neighborhood Association as well. That's part of this year's cohort. And also, I, I went through the program as well when I was just a staffer in this, for Councilmember Larry Carr. And it was really kind of my first introduction when I became a staffer to, an introduction to the city. And so, really love the program and just wanted to give a shout out and say congratulations to all of you and spending your time being part of the Planning Academy because it's really about building the pipeline of Sacramento leaders. And this is where it really all begins so that you can understand the inner workings of the city. So, congratulations to all of you and major shout out to Jeff.
Very good. Although there's no such thing as a time when Councilmember Vang was just a staffer. But, okay, the rest of that was fantastic. All right, on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
I don't know if any of you have items you want to pull or things you'd like to speak on separately. Let me know. Number Harris, you have something you need to pull?
Yeah, I want to make a comment on number five, ask questions.
Do you want to pull it or you want to just ask a question when it comes up?
There's comments and questions.
Okay, all right, we won't pull it then. Anybody else? Councilmember Valenzuela, are you good on the balance? Do you need anything? You good? Okay, all right. So, Councilmember Harris, you want to make your comment then? I think you're the only one.
Yeah, on item number five, it's about procurement of vehicles for the city. And I'm wondering, is Mark Stevens on the call?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mark, we spoke earlier, you know, climate change is, of course, imperative issue for, for the council. But we, we did not fund climate projects at mid-year. I think that that makes it even more important that our fleet be completely green. And I know you're doing a great job with that. This is about three and a half million dollars expenditure for new vehicles for the city. Can you give us an idea of how many will be EVs? Or, you know, what, what your predisposition is in terms of procurement to make sure that our fleet stays green and supports our climate goals?
Yes, good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Mark Stevens, fleet manager for the city. We have a sustainability policy that we utilize annually for our procurement. And right now, it mandates that 75% of our light duty will be some form of zero emission vehicle. And of course, 50% of our, our heavy-duty fleet, so. But we also meet annually with city staff when we look at our vehicle placement. And we do recommend EVs or, at the minimum, some type of alternative fuel for, for all of our departments based on the technology that's available. There are some areas where we can't necessarily meet the EV requirement in, say, for example, our police fleet. So, we are now purchasing all hybrid police vehicles so we can minimize the vehicle idling time. Those vehicles can run off of the vehicle battery rather than operating on gasoline when they're running their computers or sitting in the air conditioning. We can use a hybrid battery for that. So, we look at all type of options for, for our fleet every year when it comes to procurement.
And I take it you're looking forward to light-duty trucks, like, you know, when Ford comes out with a EV light-duty truck, you'll be looking at those for procurement?
Yes, sir. In fact, this, this agenda item relates to that. So, it'll, it gives us the authority to purchase those vehicles when they're, when they're available. We're just waiting for Ford to open up that, that order bank, and we are literally ready to, to pull the trigger as soon as they do. So, we're absolutely looking forward to purchasing the Lightnings this year. But we do have a, we do have a caveat to that is we have enough EV infrastructure right now. We're not completely saturated at this point, but as we move forward in the next five years, we have a projected procurement of about 270 vehicles. We're going to need ultimately some EV infrastructure, obviously, to meet those, the demands of those EV vehicles. So, that's on the, on the, the future agenda items is making sure that we have an infrastructure available and financing available for that, for EV vehicles.
Great. Mark, thanks for the update, and we'll certainly keep ours open for items regarding EV charging because we're going to have to fund that infrastructure. Really appreciate you and the fact that you have, actually, we've received awards for, for our Green Fleet. And appreciate you and all the staff that work towards that goal.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Harris, thank you, Mr. Stevens. We want to be first in line for those four trucks. That sounds, that sounds great. Thanks, Councilmember Harris, for asking the question. There are no other comments from councilmembers. So, Councilmember Harris, did you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll move consent.
All right, do I have a second?
You do.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. All right, Madam Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Can't hear you, Sean. Okay, we come back to him.
We'll try to, definitely. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata? Is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
And Councilmember Laloe?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent calendar passes.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to hand this back to our mayor now that he's been able to join us. Mayor, thank you for letting me get it started. Good news, we changed the name of the city and decided to paint City Hall purple. So, welcome to the meeting.
You know what? I knew, I knew it would be in good hands. Thank you.
Absolutely, you bet.
Actually, we are lighting a number of buildings orange tonight in memory of all the victims that done violence throughout the country. I'm very, very proud of that. It's a very good thing, but thank you. I just had to attend some other business and may be off again. So, we may go back and forth a little bit tonight, if that's all right. Let's take up the public hearings. Item 13 and 14, we could take together. These are the, the, the building case fees and penalties. Who is there? Mr. Lemos, our code enforcement director?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of city council. Peter Lemos, your code and housing enforcement chief for Community Development Department. The items before you are the neighborhood code compliance and the housing and dangerous building case fees and penalties for special assessment and/or personal obligations. So, we will run these concurrently per separate vote. Item 13, the housing and dangerous building case fee staff report lists an amended total of 91 properties with a total of $106,591.11 of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against the property. Three properties listed in your Exhibit A of the staff report have set up payment plans and/or been paid in full and are identified as item number 18 and 19, 53, 54, and 148. Item 14, the Community Development Department Administrative Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliance Case Fee Staff Report lists an amended total of 138 properties with a sum of $541,281 of unpaid fees and/or penalties scheduled for special assessment and/or personal obligations against the property. Eight properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line numbers 15, 16, 45, 78, 107, 117, 152, and 182. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessments, levies, and/or personal obligations upon the properties. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Is there public testimony on the item?
Mayor, I show no hands reads to make public testimony.
Okay.
I'll move the item. I'll move them both. Can we do them both at once, Mindy, or one at a time?
You can open and close the public hearings and then move each other.
Oh, open and close the public hearings and move the items.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Can you move the vote separately on each item?
Of course.
Please, as Sandra Talbot, Chief Assistant City Attorney.
Sure.
So, the public hearing-
All right, let's call the first one. Item 13, please.
Thank you. Item 13 was opened and closed by Chenier and seconded by Laloe. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, let's call and roll for item 14, please.
I'll open and close the public hearing, move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Was that seconded by Councilmember Vang?
That is correct.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. That passes. Well, now, let's move to the discussion calendar, the meat of the meeting tonight. And we discussed tonight the Fire and Police Departments as well as the City's Asset Forfeiture Master Plan. Let's begin with the Fire Department budget, please. And item 15, is the chief here?
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, welcome, chief and team.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Mayor Jan and City Clerk Cuppy. As you know, I am Fire Chief Gary Loesch. It is an honor to be with you tonight presenting our fiscal year 2023 budget. Sacramento Fire Department has 24 stations and 17 medic units, which we use to respond to all medical calls and fire calls in our operational area. For some background, calls for service have continued to increase. The SFD went from 94,000 calls in 2020 to 105,000 calls in 2021. And we are on track to respond to over 115,000 calls for service in 2022. This is a 22% increase in just the last two years alone. This number will only continue to increase as time goes by as we become the primary medical care for more and more of the citizens of Sacramento. This is not only exhausting for our members, but it also generates more extensive wear and tear on our apparatus, equipment, and the city infrastructure such as roadways. Not to mention the dramatic increase in fuel consumption needed for our apparatus. I would be remiss if I did not recognize the outstanding dedication and devotion to duty of our members. The men and women of this department are still dealing with the increased workload created by COVID-19 pandemic. They endure grueling work hours, ridiculously lengthy wall times in our hospitals, mandatory overtime, and company brownouts. We had 394 brownouts just last year alone. We are also dealing with unprecedented member retention challenges. We currently have 62 vacancies, and this grows weekly. Finally, I want to reassure you all, the quality of care our residents receive by the SFD will never falter. Honor, respect, courage, integrity, and devotion to duty is what every member of the SFD lives by. I would now like to turn over the presentation to Annie Artarian, our Fire Administration Manager, and Allison Namor, our Finance Manager, with assistance from Assistant Chief Kim Ayuchi, who will present the door to the SFD portion of the presentation. Annie?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's our privilege as the Finance Department, Finance Division of the Fire Department to present you our proposed budget for fiscal year 21, 22. Excuse me, 23. And so, on our budget summary, just a brief going over fiscal year 22 and the proposed 23 changes in employee service. We had 4.2 million. This is due to step increases, door program year two, our EMS coordinator proposal, and our senior staff fire prevention personnel. In our supply, services and supplies, 1.9 million of the budget is requested related to the new, the new positions as well as year-two door funding. Labor offset, that 1.7 is due to door year two, where with a net total of $4.4 million. Our position changes and FTEs from fiscal year 22 to 23 is our sworn, we have a change of one FTE. In civilian, we will have two changes that we'll be presenting to you tonight. In our non-career staff members, we will have 10, which are EMS student trainee interns, for a total of 13 FTEs.
Part of our 21, 22 department efficiencies in our operations EMS division, we partnered with County Sacramento Public Health to establish and deploy a mobile integrated health and pandemic response unit. We also increased our insurance training program to provide the best quality of patient services to our residents. In our tech services unit, we continue to rebound ambulance box units on a new chassis, which provides cost savings for each replacement medical unit. And the rebound process saves anywhere between 55 and 65% per unit compared to a full replacement. Additionally, in our tech services, we started a care and maintenance exchange program for our protective person, uh, personal protective equipment turnouts. Also, our department receives a variety of grants that are county, state, and federal grants. We start with our Urban Surge and Rescue Grant, where we receive an annual operating grant of 1.3 million. This is to help fund and provide training and maintain equipment and supplies for our deploy locally and nationally for our team. We also receive a state homeland security grant program each year. This last year, we received $9,000, $19,500 in state federal year 2020 funding for supporting our rescue hazmat and swift water programs. Assistance with the firefighter grant program, this year, we received $430,000 in a health and wellness for 500 cancer screening. We also receive an urban, urban area and security initiative, UWASI grant, which is monitored by the Sacramento Police Department, and we staff one fire captain in there. Additionally, we've recently been applying for CALOES grants, where we received a recent $115,000 insert training equipment. Without these grants, our department would not have all the equipment which we do have.
Our department objectives for fiscal year 2022 and 23. Our first one is to continue to assess and prioritize department staffing to support the increase in workload. We're going to evaluate and implement the outreach and recruitment program to increase diversity in the applicant pool. And Chief Ayanuchi is definitely doing that for us with the door division. Evaluating all security in all of our stations to ensure safety. Review of the utility and technology usage throughout all divisions, and this is crucial with the economics of the tax. Review the centralized logistics functions to maximize services and delivery. Our proposed 2022, 23 general fund position changes are as the following. In our door diversity outreach and recruitment, we are adding one FTE for our ad, for our admin firefighter. We're also adding in the 10 FTEs, which are the part-time interns for fire EMS student trainee interns. The door program, along with infrastructure facility fundings to provide quality programs and an inclusive environment towards the future of our workforce. In EMS, we're going to add, we're requesting to add one FTE for an EMS coordinator. This coordinator allows the department to meet federal, state, and county mandates for reporting, training, and education, incident review, and infectious control. Costs are being offset in this position with the increase of revenue in the EMS division budget. In fire prevention, we're requesting the addition of one FTE for a senior staff assistant. This is to enhance our statistical reporting, perform photo and video redaction, monitor, track budgetary items, arson, residency, and movement, and maintaining records for the division. This, this request for position is also being offset with an increase of revenue in the fire prevention division. And now, I'm going to hand this off to Chief Ayanuchi for the year-one deliverables for the door program.
Thank you. I'll be going over the diversity outreach and recruitment division year one. Just a quick overview to see, to visit some of the areas that we, we made accomplishments. Our goal, of course, is to develop and formalize the diversity outreach and recruitment program so that we can increase diversity and equity in our applicant pool. And during all steps, we ensure that we're providing opportunities to people of color and youth in our community seeking a career in the fire service. All of our efforts are community-focused so that we can reflect the community we serve to better serve the community. Our objectives are listed up on the slide, and we make sure that we follow those at all times. We've developed our vision and our mission statement. We've developed our vision and our mission statements for both the overarching division as well as each particular program that we're running. We'll have our first door annual report available mid-July that will cover all the division's outcomes and any statistics that we want to report. One of the areas in our outreach and recruitment is that we highlighted is our Sacramento Firefighter Youth Academy. This this academy runs October sixteenth and will be graduating June twenty-fifth. We partner and recruit from local high schools, Padawan high schools such as Valley, Hiram, Intercom, Health Professions, Saba, Brand, and Sacai. There were cadets, of course, receiving hands-on training that introduces them to fire skills while we make sure we're preparing them for giving them career development skills to prepare for a future career. In partnership with YFC, we have five seniors who are enrolled in the Workforce Innovative Opportunity Act, and so they receive fifteen dollars an hour for work experience. August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two will be our next academy start date. We will bump up the number of students to thirty-five. One of the other areas that we highlighted are is the girls camp. We make sure that we incorporate all citywide youth development principles and the the race and gender equity action plan outcomes in our program development. We had a a great camp, and all the girls were really excited as well as the career firefighters, the women firefighters who came out to join us. We're also partnered with a high with high school crew technical education programs, not highlighted in these slides, but important to know because that's another area that we recruit for our additional pipeline programs. In our volunteer fire reserve program, it's important that we have a pathway for our youth to step into. And one of these is our volunteer fire reserve program. Again, we use the our chief outcome number three to guide us in how we set the program up. Currently, we have twenty active reserves and a new cohort of twenty-five reserves. And we will be recruiting from all of our graduating seniors in all of our youth programs that we're connected with. We'll start onboarding them in the summer and bring them in once they reach age eighteen. And then I wanted to point out that forty-seven percent of our reserves are age eighteen to twenty-four, and so they still fit, at least half fit in the the youth diaspora. So and this number will grow as we spend, have more time in our programs. For our outreach events, we have a number of trained, we've got, we've been really reaching out to our community specifically to make sure that we're connecting with our community. We have a trained crew of field recruiters, thirty-two to date. We've reached over twenty thousand people so far, and that is with COVID. We expect to see those numbers go up dramatically. We we have implemented a virtual reality program that people can put on the virtual reality goggles and see what it's like to step into a fire, to drive code three, to climb an aerial. The other thing that has worked out really well is we are doing one-on-ones with our with our fire captain right now, and it'll also go out to the field recruiters. And people can sign up to schedule a one-on-one for an hour with with the recruiter. And to date, we're booked all the way through. We have listed the events by district and we, so that you can see that where we're at in the community. Additionally, we're excited to get the public safety education trailer, which will be a great community asset that each of you can request for any of your events. Twenty-seven foot trailer with full ADA compliant accessibility for public safety and home safety.
Yes. Thank you. Allison and I will now present our proposals for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. The first one is for our diversity outreach and recruitment division door. It's the pipeline expansion, excuse me, pipeline program expand, expand, expansion. This is part of the year-two funding request that we went over last year. This section will focus on our pipeline program that will provide training opportunities to our youth and young adults in our community. The following will have an EMS program, which develops various internship entry levels that include academic sponsorship and training for a year one through four EMS EMT internship program. And this budget request is requesting ten FTEs, which is equivalent to twenty part-time trainees. And again, this is the EMT EMS positions that are currently in development.
In our fire prevention, uh, fire prevention division, we are requesting a senior staff assistant. This position will focus on enhancing our fire prevention division, fire marshal, program specialist, and fire investigator two and senior FPO support. This position will provide the following support: composed statistical reports related to fire activities and trends, arson investigation units, performance measures, perform photo and video reaction, track and monitor fire arson's budgetary expenditures, registered residency and movement, maintain records related to fire arson investigations, equipment and personal protective equipment, and the fire arson investigative units, records, and research training opportunities. The FY twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three budget request is for a senior staff assistant of one FTE.
The EMS division is requesting a coordinator position. This will allow the EMS division to meet their federal, state, and county mandates for reporting, training, education, incident review, and infectious control. This position will provide the following support: clinical programs director of continuing education, quality assurance manager, training and education manager, designated infectious control officer. This request will include the addition of one FTE for the EMS coordinator position. And again, this is a cost mutual program due to increase of revenues from the EMS division.
And lastly, as previously discussed at the two o'clock meeting, the fire CIP plan, we're going to receive current funding that we receive in our fire personnel safety equipment, our fleet emergency response vehicles, and our EMS equipment and ambulances. Additionally, we're requesting for one-time funding of seven point zero seven two million to right-size our CIPs to ensure we can buy, replace, put them properly based on expiration dates of equipments. And now I'll go back over to the fires.
So at this time, that's the completion of our presentation. Myself and my staff are available to answer any questions. Thank you so very much for your attention.
Sorry about that. Thank you, chief and your team for very thorough professional presentation. Members, I think what we want to do is hear from the public first and then turn it over to the city council. Let me turn it to Mindy Cuppy for the first witness, please. I think I have Ryan Henry from Local Five Two Two.
So mayor, I have one hand raised from Ryan Henry.
Go right ahead. Mr. Henry, welcome. And we're going to go give Mr. Henry more than two minutes. He is the leader of the exclusive representative for the for the ranking file firefighters. And I think it's appropriate that he gets to make a presentation. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate the extra time. I have my comments down to just over two minutes, not not much longer. So thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Ryan Henry, vice president for Sacramento firefighters. When a firefighter swears an oath to protect the citizens of Sacramento, they do so with the understanding that in the event of emergencies, they will be required to work overtime on a mandatory basis. It's part of the job. Over the past five years, the use of mandatory overtime has become a daily occurrence in order to keep the fire department running. Firefighters being forced to work in addition to their regular shifts has become excessive and unsustainable. There are limits to the hours that an individual can be forced to work. When those limits are reached, vacancies go unfilled, resulting in the closure of a fire engine or truck for twenty-four hours. Last year, these closures, called brownouts, occurred three hundred and ninety-four times, affecting every council district in this city. Fire Station Forty-three in North Atomas was opened in late two thousand eleven. This was the last time an additional fire engine was placed in service in Sacramento. In two thousand eleven, the Sacramento Fire Department responded to over seventy-one thousand calls for service. Fast forward ten years. In two thousand twenty-one, that number jumped to over a hundred and five thousand calls for service. This represents a forty-seven percent increase in call volume and workload for your firefighters. Currently, there are seventeen members moved off of their assigned fire apparatus to work in support roles throughout the department. Because these positions are unfunded, the vacancies created on their respective fire engines and trucks must be filled daily with overtime. Of these seventeen positions, five were identified as ongoing long-term programs that are vital to the Sacramento Fire Department and the citizens we serve. Please consider funding these five positions in the public information office, the behavioral health unit, the EMS division, and emergency vehicle operation center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, for your presentation, and I know that you have presented to the members and I think to the city manager as well, an actual document that lays out, lays out your proposal. So there is no vote tonight, but let's discuss all of this, the department's recommendations. We just heard from Mr. Henry, and let's see how we, how the members think about wanting to move forward. I, why don't I start with council member Valenzuela, then Vang, then Ashby? Mr. City Manager, did you want to say something first?
Yeah, it'd be real fast, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Henry and I did talk about this, and we agree that we need to address the overtime here. And one of the things that he's presented to to me along with the council members here is a way to get there. I would ask that staff go back and take a look at how we might accomplish the reduction in overtime, maybe in part by with the present, the proposal he submitted and or other means. As he has mentioned, we've pulled in five individuals from the field to support the administrative office. And there might be a way to backfill some of that support in the office and get folks back out in the field that might not necessitate all five positions, maybe some variation of it. But I'm open to sitting down and talking with them. He and I chatted a little bit before this meeting, so I think we're, we could find a path forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I just want to start, if I may, and I appreciate that, Mr. Manager, and I've talked to both you and and Mr. Henry, and I appreciate the offer. Obviously, fourteen, fifteen million dollars a year of overtime is a huge drain on our city budget. And and more importantly, on the morale and really the health and safety of our firefighters. And I know we've got, we're not discussing collective bargaining here, but I just want to identify, we have a unique opportunity here. We've got a lot of goodwill, and we've got a lot of very positive discussions going on within that context. And now you have the position issue, which is a budget issue. The department's presented their budget, their position recommendations outside of collective bargaining. Mr. Henry is doing the same. And so whether it's inside or outside collective bargaining, I I think the direction of the council, I know from me, will be for you to please work it out, as they say, and come to a real collaborative agreement with Mr. Henry. Because I think, and five two two, because I think we have a, it's a new day, and I want to take advantage of it in a positive way. And you know, these categories that they put out seem interesting, and it may be appropriate. But I understand, and you've got your views, and I don't want to presuppose what that will be. I just want to urge you to to come back with something that both he and you can support enthusiastically to the city council.
I think we have the same goal is to reduce that overtime, and we'll we'll find a way home.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Let's go down the line here, Ms. Katie Valenzuela.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, city manager, for that encouraging update. I think I really appreciate the data that five two two and Chief Loesch have given to explain the issue. I also did a twenty-four hour ride-along, shout out to Station Two, where I got to see that firsthand. And I've got to tell you, there were people on that shift who were working ninety-six hour weeks. There was somebody on that shift who said they were working a hundred and twenty hour week. And granted, they were willing to do it. They wanted to help. They maybe needed the money for a down payment or on a house or something like that. But that's not sustainable for for any individual to work that long when you have that high of a demand and those long of wait times and ERs. I mean, it's just, it's a system that feels like it's it's ready to snap. And that makes me really nervous, because this is the, this is the system you call when someone's having a heart attack, when someone's been, I mean, they rushed into the shooting right next to the police officers who were there to help save lives. I mean, this is a department that we want to be successful and stable in the long run. So the two sides of this proposal, I'm really excited about. I'm excited about the single role. I think it's a great idea to to shift the medic program to make it more accessible, to increase diversity, and to really reduce the strain and to get those firefighters back doing firefighter engine, you know, work and and get more people into the medic profession that might not be otherwise able to access it. I have to say, I am incredibly impressed by your first-year results in door. I just, I need to give you a shout out to that. Those numbers that you showed are really impressive. And and I think, and knowing that where we're shifting, if we shift towards single role, if we're and we're bringing in these extra positions to help support that program, those ten positions, it's really exciting to to see where the department is moving, and I just have to give you all props for for that because I know that took a lot of work and design, and I think that's just incredible. And I do want to reiterate, and I won't belabor the point because the mayor just beat me to to the punch there a little bit with these five positions, because I think it's important for us to name what these five positions do. One of these positions is the behavioral health position. It is the only person, as I understand it, who does behavioral health for the entire department. And again, these are people who are running in and helping shooting victims. These are people who are running in, in the case of the shooting in my district in April, to potential active shooter situations. And they need someone to support them when they come out of that situation and need process, need help processing what they've seen so that they can continue to to help people. You have a public information officer. How will the public know what is happening? And just to give comparable numbers here, I mean, the police department, I believe, has five paid PIO positions, and we don't even have one in the fire department. And I just think, given the level of risk in those situations and how important it is to get information out, that is a critical position. The EVAC program, I had to like, remind myself of the acronym, the Emergency Vehicle Operations Instruction Program. I mean, that saves money for the city to train, and they don't just train fire. They're training garbage truck drivers. I mean, they're training other city employees to do their job well. I mean, and then the EMS position to complement what the department just appropriately laid out in terms of positions that pay for themselves. These are things, in my mind, that not only give back more, I don't even say like they pay for themselves. These are positions that pay for themselves in multitudes in terms of the benefits and impact it has on our department and on our city. And so I just really want to encourage, again, this two-pronged approach that I'm hearing from five two two, not just with these positions, but with the single role program. This is the path out of getting not just the overtime under control, but this is also about increasing diversity in our department and making sure that the people who are working really hard for us through increased call volumes have what they need to do it well. So I want to belabor and ask the city manager to answer any questions because he just did. But I'm really encouraged by what you just said, Howard, and really hopeful that what comes back to us before we adopt the final budget reflects those two programs, those two-pronged approach and and fully funds it to the degree we can figure that out, because this is something that pays for itself and then some. And I just think it's worth every penny we can try to find. Thank you, Howard, and thank you. Thank you, chief, and your team. Great presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang, then Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Harris.
Thanks, mayor. I think you and Councilman Valenzuela have beaten me to some of the items. But definitely first want to take this moment and thank chief and just your incredible team for presenting a really thorough presentation. I also just want to say thank you to Ryan from Five Two Two for calling in. I think that you heard from chief, I've also heard from firefighters online, is that, you know, there is significant staffing challenges. I know that our EMT and our firefighters literally have become the frontline medical care for our our residents. And I think one of the big things that I am constantly concerned about, and I mentioned this during last year's budget, is really the overtime. And if we're already spending fifteen million on overtime, we need to invest in these positions because they will help us reduce overtime costs. I am encouraged hearing from you, city manager, that you'll go back with Five Two Two and our fire department to bring back a resolution, something that we could work to bring back a resolution, something that we could work on when we vote on this budget. I think one of the FTE that Ryan had mentioned, two of them actually, I think if we can fund all five, that would be great, but two of them in particular, one is the PIO. The fact that we don't have a, a Public Information Officer in the Fire Department is really concerning to me, because they are the interface to the public about what is happening. And I know that for SAC PD, for the SAC, the Police Department, their staff with five, and we don't have any in the Fire Department, and I think that's really important. And the other position that I would be a big advocate for is really the Behavioral Health Position, making sure that we have someone there to really help coordinate. And so just really wanted to just emphasize at least those two positions. Ideally, I think it's pretty reasonable what five-two-two presented as well, but those are the two positions that I would like to just uplift as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to take this moment just to say thank you to all the staff working with the door program. You know, this is so incredible, similar to what Councilwoman Valenzuela mentioned. You definitely, when you look at the demographics and the pipeline, I could see the intentionality behind your outreach, and I just want to say congratulations, and really looking forward to seeing the evaluation when it comes back this summer. I too had a chance to participate in last year's girls' fire camp, and it was incredibly inspiring to see so many young diverse girls really learn what it takes to become a firefighter, and they got it. I had a chance to put on some firefighter gear also and actually enter a dark building with a tank on my back. It was really scary, but I made through it. Super fun, but I just think it's, that girls' camp just taught so much, even for me as a councilwoman, so I can't imagine just the transformative experience that these young girls had. And so just really want to take this moment to also just center door, the door initiative, and also the staff that's working really hard. A lot of the, our, our, our women firefighters that are part of this in making sure that we can really create that pipeline. So just want to give kudos to staff for, for, for that. And I think that's it, Mayor, and I will end my comment there and really encourage again, City Manager, that you will go back with five-two-two and our Fire Department to, to find a resolution to the position. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I would just want to say thank you to a lot of people, but first I want to thank you, Mayor, because you will recall, and we just voted on this on our consent calendar, which, you know, we started that new process of putting items that councilmembers request for discussion on there as item one, and if you look at it back in July of last year, there's an item from the mayor saying, hey, we are paying too much in overtime, we have COVID burnout, we need to help our firefighters, and asking the Chief and the City Manager to try to remedy that. And here we are. There've been a lot of things that City Manager Chan has done over the last year to try to get those academies going, to really support the department, and I know that even working very hard with the, the leadership team there, that that Howard's done a great job trying to, trying to bring something forward. So I don't think it's by coincidence that you hear your City Manager saying, I'm going to try to really make this work, and that you hear your union saying, please help me, and that you hear your mayor saying, this is the direction we need to go. And I do think it will all fold in nicely. I've been a strong critic of single role for a long time, and my rationale on that is just that I worry that it gets halfway done. So I, my only ask of everyone involved in this call, it's going to outlast me by a long shot on this discussion, is just make sure it goes all the way through, because it's a great program if it's all the way funded and all the way taken care of. But if you go halfway and decide to stop or run out of money or hit a recession, it will drastically impact the kind of care that people in the city of Sacramento get, and that would not be okay. So my only ask as that conversation proceeds is that, that it's a full commitment and not an in-piece or part commitment piece by piece. So as that goes, I want to really thank the executive team there. I know Chief, you do a lot of good work, but you're surrounded by amazing people, and Mike, I've been really impressed with you. People don't even understand Chief Taylor, but how much this guy has done during COVID. How hard it has been with the hospitals. That stuff doesn't always come all the way to this council, but because I'm married to an ER nurse who's in charge of trying to figure out how to deal with wall times and how to get these guys back out into the city, I know the kind of creative and innovative things they've had to do. And Mike, I know how much you have stood up for our constituents to not allow a process that would leave people sort of sitting in hallways or out in front or in loading docks. And I just want to take this moment to tell you how really proud I am of you. And I know a lot of this stuff around EMS comes back to the hard work that you're doing, and you've been filling the gaps, and I hope that by adding some of these positions, it will help give you a, a full-throated opportunity here to really round out your EMS service and do a good job for the city of Sacramento. And Chris and Nico, I know how hard you two work to support your chief, and I know how much time and energy and effort you put into every detail of these proposals. And I know how much it means to you to, to bring this forward and have support from council. And Kim, I know that from the first day that I met you, you've been working on this diversity package, and, and I had to smile just to even hear you be the one presenting it today, because I know deeply and personally how much it means to you and to James Butler, that I've been presenting it since, for as long as I can remember. And so I want to, you know, a little preemptively, I know we're not exactly putting this all together today, but I want to congratulate you. That's true leadership, seeing it all the way through to the funding day. That's where we are here. Good job to all of you, and Chief, you know, to your team, and, and Howard ultimately to you. And Mayor, it's all a very positive reflection on you, and I know Allison has joined the team and, and helped cross those Ts and dot the Is and make sure that the budgets square up with what everybody's trying to do, and, and so I'm really impressed by the team. I'm very much looking forward to taking the mayor's item off of the council follow-up log, and I just throw my weight in here too, Howard, for what it's worth. We've long needed those PIO positions. The EVOC is broader actually than just fire, because fire does the EVOC training for a lot of groups. And it's, the EMS piece is critically important. So I think this is really strong leadership, but for anybody who might be paying attention out there in the city of Sacramento, this is really about a partnership between your mayor, your Fire Department, your Fire Union, and your City Manager, and so appreciate all of you. Good work.
Thank you. It is a new day, and appreciate those very supportive comments. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would like to also congratulate the team. You know, and that includes the City Manager, the Chief, Ryan Henry, all the staff. Look, we've been talking about overtime in the Fire Department for years. It has reached a critical proportion. It really is taking a toll on the department. So we have this immediate need, but we have a couple of ways to alleviate it. I have to tell you, you know, as soon as I got seated on this council, I wrote a little report about what single role could mean to the Fire Department. It wasn't well received back then. Here, seven and a half years later, we're on the cusp of achieving single role, and this is going to help us achieve diversity and alleviate overtime. So the City Manager is in a bit of a conundrum, because we have this immediate need to alleviate the extensive overtime. But also, as we develop MOU for single role, that's going to require hiring quite a few FDE, maybe as many as twenty-six. So it's a balancing act with our budget for the City Manager to keep all these balls in the air and come out with the right solution. And Howard, I, I believe that you are, will come up with a good plan with Mr. Henry to deal with the immediate urgency while still keeping your eye on the ball of the, the gold standard, which is getting that MOU signed, and bringing single role finally, at last, after many years to the city, because it is really going to help the Fire Department in numerous ways. I want to thank Ryan Henry for keeping an open mind about this and negotiating with Howard and with the Chief. And Chief, you know, you've been beating this drum since you got here from Philly. You have run a single role operation, you know what it can do, and you have been steadfast in your desire to create more efficiency in the Fire Department and, you know, make the job more tenable for, for all of the rank and file. So between all of you, getting to single role to me is tremendously gratifying. I thank you all for your effort. And I think the mayor's right. I think it's a new day. I think that we're going to see a real transformative change in the Fire Department that's going to be beneficial for all people involved. So thank you all. I appreciate it very much.
Very, very good. Any, any final comments? So yeah, there's
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of brief comments here.
Go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, I, I, I don't want to repeat everything that, that sorry, I had single dad today. So I wanted to, just to agree with everything that was meant about the positions. But one point that I think came up during the budget, not a committee, about our rising insurance costs. And I think Assistant City Manager Lani Millsand brought up how EVOC has helped in trying to reduce our, our increased insurance costs, and that was in the presentation at our last budget. I just want to point out that having that EVOC trainer and making sure that we're looking at reducing the number of litigations that we've had is, is something that we should look at to, to try to control some of that, the, the, the growing cost that we have right now with our insurance premium. And of course, you know, I think the mental health positions are critical, but I agree with my colleagues, I think particularly when I first got on the council twenty-fifteen at Station Ten, and we were talking about, you know, how do we make, make sure that our departments look, look more and are representative and from our community. This, this door program, you know, Kim, I think what you're doing is, is great, and I'm excited about that. We're actually making some progress now moving forward. But I didn't want, I wanted to make sure to the point that we have a rising, you know, liability with our insurance premium. If we manage, if we're able to get ahead of it by managing our training and making sure that our EVOC program reduces that, there's cost savings in that aspect. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll leave it to that. I know there's more negotiations to be had, and I, I want to thank everyone on the team for putting together a, a good budget.
Terrific. Thank you, Councilman Getta, Mayor Putnam. You know, it's all teed up here. I mean, you do have the contract negotiation, you have the single role issue, you have the positions, both what the department has recommended, the interns, what the, the good ideas that five-two-two has put forward. Let's put this all together and doing the right thing in a stronger relationship will, will serve the city well, as well as the men and women who, who work so hard in our fire and EMS service. Chief Loesch, thank you. Thank you to your team. City Manager, thank you. Mr. Henry, thank you, and thank you to my colleagues, Vice Mayor especially, and all of you. Really appreciate it. All right. Let's move on to the next item. Let's take on another easy issue, the, the police budget, and we have our, I say still new Police Chief. Chief Lester, welcome to you.
Hello, Mayor. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kathy Lester, your Chief of Police, and I'm here to present the Police Department's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget and asset forfeiture master plan, which we're presenting together. So this, this budget present or reflects several changes from prior years. The amended FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget was two hundred and seven point six-six million dollars. And during the past year, the council reduced Measure U funding to five point six-five million to fund only the pipeline hiring program, and therefore a greater portion of the Police Department budget is now supported through the general fund. There are no additional staff being added to the Police Department in this year's proposed budget. Of note, labor costs account for over ninety-one percent of our budget, and this year's increase in labor is due to the ratification of labor contracts with the Sacramento Police Officers Association, Local Thirty-nine and SCXDA, as approved by the City Council. Additionally, the Office of Violence Prevention has been moved operationally to the Police Department effective July first of twenty-twenty-two. This change will be discussed as part of the presentation. The intent of tonight's presentation is not only to give a financial report, but also is an opportunity for our team to share metrics in greater detail. I'd really like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to demonstrate in greater detail the work of our department and measured outcomes. First, though, I'd like to highlight some efforts that we are making. We continue to focus on training improvements and have been able to expand upon crisis intervention training, less legal tools and tactics, critical decision-making, peer intervention, and de-escalation. We have and continue to foster collaboration between community-based organizations and recognize the great value these organizations have to not only our department, but to our public safety and our community. We have also joined the Thirty by Thirty Initiative with the goal of increasing representation of women in our department to thirty percent by twenty-thirty. We have also implemented a cloud-based background management system to be more efficient and responsive in completing background investigations and recruiting new members. We know recruiting and retention is a challenge for all departments. We have also worked with the city and our contractors to create promotional and hiring exams that are race and general neutral in alignment with the city's workforce development goals. We maintain a very robust transparency website, and a directory of videos, audio files, and documents can easily be accessed by the public. We also now have one year of constitutional policing audits that are available for public review. We have expanded our use of emerging, of emerging technologies such as the police observation devices, also known as PODs, unmanned aerial systems, and the Real-Time Crime Center. As an example, a POD was absolutely instrumental in the investigation of the K Street shooting, and we have had numerous events and peacefully through the use of our UAS program. We also continue to focus on youth and prevention efforts. For example, we have five hundred and thirty-four students in our Criminal Justice Magnet Academy and currently have a one hundred percent graduation rate. In conjunction with our Finance Director, Brenda Delvedio, we will present the proposed budget, which will include information on authorized staffing. In response to last week's request for additional metrics and data, each office will then make a short presentation on their staffing and significant data points. Brenda will then present on the proposed operating budget, Measure U programs, and the Office of Violence Prevention. Natalie Weaver, who is our Administrative Officer in our Fiscal Division, will then present on the Capital Improvement Program, MYOPS, and I will touch on our department objectives. Finally, I will end the budget presentation and move on to the department's asset forfeiture plan. As you can see with our authorized staffing, our staffing remains stable and unchanged from the last fiscal year. We do have some vacancies. While we have seven hundred and sixty-nine authorized sworn positions, as of May thirteenth, we had ninety sworn vacancies. The really great news is that we have fifty people that are conditionally hired for this summer CSO Academy and our upcoming Police Academy. The Pipeline Hiring Program has been one of our greatest tools for significantly increasing diversity within our department. Our student training diversity is eighty-two percent. Our last CSO Academy was seventy-five percent diverse, and our most recent Police Academy is seventy-one percent diverse. However, in addition to these recruits that are entering into a long-term training program, we still have forty vacancies, and that does not account for expected attrition that we usually see at the end of the fiscal year. We also have sixty-two professional staff, which are non-sworn vacancies out of three hundred and fifty-seven point nine-six authorized positions, and these employees provide critical support department-wide. Currently, most of these vacancies are in the Records Division and the Ninety-one Mobile Center. This is a historical slide just to show our staffing from that perspective. In two thousand and eight, there were eight hundred and four authorized sworn positions to serve our city, which had a population of four hundred and sixty-one thousand at the time. We, like many organizations and many departments within the city, made a number of cuts in response to the recession, and we certainly have not rebounded completely. Since two thousand and eight, the population has grown eleven percent, and as you know, the city has really activated in many positive ways during that time. However, the reality is the Police Department has five percent fewer authorized sworn positions and twenty-three percent fewer authorized professional staff positions now than we did fourteen years ago. Concurrently, the landscape of local government has changed significantly over that time. We are all faced with new challenges in public service. In recent years, on the public safety side, we have seen an increase in violent crime, including gun and domestic violence, and we're also challenged in other fronts, including increased first-in-the-activity, which requires us to divert limited resources. And first, as, as first responders, we have much less access to mental health and addiction resources for those in need. These are resources that I know the council regularly advocates for, and we do appreciate that. Additionally, we have changed the way we serve our community. Our department is steadfastly committed to de-escalation, communication, and prevention efforts, aligning our efforts with others committed to the same goals. Finally, in our efforts to promote transparency and meet legislative changes, we have redirected significant resources to support these important initiatives. I appreciate the mayor and council's support of what we're trying to do, especially over the past few years. So currently, our department is focusing on three primary areas in the upcoming year. I would like to expand on our community engagement and transparency efforts, so we will expand information available to the public regarding crime and demographic data as well as additional metrics. We will continue the partnerships that we have with our educational partners, including We will continue the partnerships that we have with our educational partners, including the University of San Diego and California State University Sacramento. To gather community feedback and input as well as evaluate the effectiveness of our strategies. We will utilize technology and outreach to seek input like what we have just done recently with the comment portal for the militarized equipment use policy. We will continue to collaborate with the Sacramento Police Community Review Commission, including adopting some of the recommendations from the auditor's report. And continuing our joint efforts towards policy development. We will also expand the role of outreach and engagement and move it to a community advancement unit. On the topic of reducing violent crime, we will be implementing a focused deterrent strategy. This is an evidence-based and a very specific strategy to address the drivers of violence while working with our federal, state, and regional partners. We will be working very closely with OBP, the Office of Violence Prevention, and Youth Development to support and collaborate with our community partners for a focus on violence disruption. We will use new technology and internal tools to guide our investigative efforts. We are also implementing a new program that I'm very excited about. This will be led by our Police Social Services Administrator. And it will be intended to help victims and promote healing following incidents of violent crime in our communities. And finally, we will strengthen partnerships with our domestic violent, domestic violence advocates and organization, including. Um, continue our funding for a domestic violence advocate for our victims. Lastly, we are really working to enhance service and professionalism throughout the department. We're expanding on the department's mentorship program. We have implemented implemented a customer service platform known as Spider Tech, and this will allow for feedback from the people that we serve. And we will further expand our auditing division's ability to conduct ongoing department audits. We have a department-wide emphasis on customer service that includes recognition, expectations, training. And enhanced supervision and emphasizing the tenants of procedural justice. And lastly, we are implementing ALF's Human Center Design to improve community and police relations. At this time, I would like to ask Deputy Chief Steve Olivera to give an overview of the Department of Operations.
All right.
Keith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Deputy Chief Steve Olivera, and I oversee the Office of Operations, which consists of the Department's Patrol Division. And our nine-one-one Communication Center. Within patrol, we have four commands with six police districts. And as all you know, there's a captain that manages each of those districts. Or commands. Um, our nine-one-one dispatchers are the first voice people hear when they call for the police. For fire or medical help, and our patrol officers are the first to respond to emergencies and many other types of calls when the police are needed. We're a very busy police department in a continuously growing city, and I want to share some stats with you, uh, some statistical data with you. Uh, mostly from twenty twenty-one, looking back, our Communication Center received over six hundred and forty-four thousand phone calls from the community. That's an average of over seventeen hundred calls a day. Almost half of those calls were nine-one-one calls. We're already seeing an eight point two percent increase in calls this year. Just looking back at last Thursday, when I received a report, we received just under two thousand calls with almost one thousand of those calls being nine-one-one calls. In the same year, in twenty twenty-one, our officers were dispatched on a hundred and seventy thousand calls per service that were community-initiated. The majority of those calls do require two officers to respond. In addition, our officers initiated another seventy-nine thousand plus calls, which can include traffic stops. Coming across a crime in progress, uh, being waved down by a community member, or just a traffic hazard. Of those calls, more than thirteen thousand were mental health-related. In addition, our officers responded to over eleven hundred shot-spotter activations for a total of almost four thousand gunshots. The shot-spotter systems cover just three small geographical areas of the city. We also track our response times. Uh, so our priority priority two calls include like shootings, assaults in progress. And right now, response time on average is about ten, ten minutes and fifty seconds. When it comes to our priority three calls, those are like our property felony crimes in progress, assaults that occurred within like the last fifteen minutes. And we're taking about twelve minutes and fifteen seconds to respond those to those calls on average. Our priority four calls are the misdemeanor crimes in progress, night alarm calls, and we're taking just over thirty minutes uh to respond to those calls. Officers and CSO spend a lot of time writing reports also. So in twenty twenty-one, there were a total of just under sixty-seven thousand reports filed. Officers and CSOs wrote more than forty-three thousand of those. Fifty-eight hundred reports were taken by our record staff. The rest, seventeen thousand plus, were online reports for crimes that we don't have the capacity to respond to, such as auto burglaries. Catalytic converter theft, shoplifting crimes, just as some examples. So as for the number of officers that we currently have in control, actually looking back at twenty twenty-one, we started out with two hundred and sixty-four patrol officers. But we're down an average of thirty-four, thirty-one officers each month for various reasons. This year, we started out with a little less, at two hundred and fifty-seven patrol officers. And as of today, we are down to two hundred and thirty that are actually working in patrol. We're fortunate to have about twenty CSOs, which are part of our hiring pipeline, that are assigned to patrol the system, taking reports and handling other calls like traffic collisions. Now, for the number of patrol officers we have working on a typical shift at any one time, it really varies by shift. But typically, on a day shift, citywide, we have thirty-four officers. On our mid-shift, we have about forty-one officers working at the same time, and on our late shift, we have uh less than that at thirty-one. Our officers cover a city of approximately a hundred square miles that continues to grow in size and population. Which is currently at approximately five hundred and fifteen thousand, as the chief mentioned earlier. And that doesn't even include our population swells and grows, you know, with visitors, especially with our nightlife downtown. In two thousand and seven, our population was about four hundred and sixty-one thousand. We had two hundred and eighty-six patrol officers, quite a few more. So compared to the two hundred and fifty-seven we started out with this year. In addition to handling calls for service, our patrol officers also participate in community meetings and events during their shifts. Uh, sideshows have also become a large drain on our patrol resources on a weekly basis. Since January of last year to up to date, we have responded to over three hundred calls involving sideshows. In addition to patrol, we also have several specialty teams assigned under Office of Operations, which includes our bike unit. We have thirteen officers that work primarily the downtown core. We have our gang enforcement teams. There's twenty-four officers, and those are assigned to our North, South, and Central East commands. Uh, and they typically deal with, you know, the gang violence. They respond to our shot-spotter calls. And of the sixteen hundred plus illegal or illegally possessed guns that officers seized last year. Our North Gang Enforcement Team seized almost three hundred of those, and twenty-five of them were the result of shot-spotter calls. We also have our POP teams. Uh, we have seventeen of those officers assigned to each command. Uh, and they address neighborhood complaints. They work with the city attorney's office on J on the JFM program. We also have a mental health unit with three officers, and they're citywide, and they respond to calls and uh conduct follow-up visits involved people in mental health crisis. And lastly, we have our hospital unit, uh, with about five officers assigned. That's contract, uh, signed to Sutter General Hospital and also the Kaiser South Hospital. Our bike gang enforcement POP teams are often the first to get pulled from their regular assignments to work protest events. In twenty twenty-one alone, we staffed ninety-eight protests. They were primarily occurred downtown. Last but not least, we have our nine-one-one Communication Center. Unfortunately, we have lost quite a few dispatchers over the past couple of years and are actively recruiting. We have a, currently, we have a thirty percent staffing shortage or twenty-four vacancies. Ninety-one would make us full staffing. So that ends my presentation, and now I'd like to introduce Deputy Chief Norm Leon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Deputy Chief Norm Leon, currently overseeing your Office of Specialized Services. The office helps support our field operations with a total of a hundred and eight sworn officers, twelve professional staff. Another hundred and seventy-three ancillary duty sworn officers. The first division within the office is our Metro Command. Metro Command has many units, the first of which are SWAT and Crisis Negotiation Unit. They utilize special training and equipment to help safely resolve incidents. In twenty twenty-one, there was two hundred and twenty-nine deployments, all resolved but one without any significant use of force. Forty callouts happened after hours. The units are on call twenty-four hours a day, year-round. They attended over fifteen community engagement events, including active shooter training for nonprofits and businesses. Example of what they do, in July of twenty twenty-one, patrol officers tried to conduct a traffic stop and were shot at. The driver fled from the car and forced his way into an innocent person's house. The suspect began to shoot at SWAT officers who were behind cover from our armored vehicle. SWAT was able to use gas, resulting in suspects surrendering without further use of force. The next unit I'll discuss is the unmanned aerial systems. The unit uses commercially available drones that anyone can buy to reduce the suspect to officer confrontation during building an area of search. There are currently thirty-six officers assigned to that unit, um, all of whom whom are FAA certified pilots. And to be certified to fly these UAVs, they have to attend a hundred and twenty hours of training. In twenty twenty-one, there was two hundred and seventy-eight calls involving our UAVs. Example of uh their use, in April of this year, they flew a hundred flights during a hostage situation. Amongst the flights that they did was to deliver a phone from our crisis negotiators to be able to communicate with the suspect. In addition, they flew a micro smaller UAV into the bathroom window. Where they were able to identify the suspect and ultimately ultimately led to the safe surrender of the suspect. The next unit um in Metro is our Explosive Ordnance Dispolting Unit. That is a ancillary assignment for officers who work in a regional team effort with other agencies. The officers respond twenty-four hours a day and also are year-round. They respond to devices that are deemed explosive or suspicious in nature. In addition to their call-out response, the unit also does sleep for explosives at major events with large containers. And they're also the police department's primary response unit for illegal fireworks investigations during the Fourth of July holiday time. Last year, P O B units responded to a hundred and twelve callouts. Most recently, you may remember, they conducted a complex investigation in multiple explosions that occurred in the Park Area. That investigation resulted in arrest of two suspects, one of which was arrested for manufacturing the devices. The next team I'll talk about in the Metro Division is our air unit. There are five sworn officers assigned there. The unit provides aerial support regionally, field officers, patrols critical infrastructure. Helps coordinate officers' arrival to scenes, as they are often the first unit to arrive on call. The air unit also allows us to end pursuit of vehicles by having the plane or helicopter follow a car. From the air until the suspect pulls over and then coordinates officers to move in to take the person into custody. Last year, they flew fourteen hundred hours. Also, the metro unit is our T nine unit. The unit provides officers with a safer means to conduct searches for suspects. Conduct article searches for evidence and to conduct bomb sites in large events. In twenty twenty-one, they had three hundred and fifty-four surrenders. That is when suspects give up when confronted by our T nine. Ninety percent of their deployments resolved without the T nine physically apprehending a suspect. They also uh attended over two hundred hours of community events. The T nines are always the favorite within the community. In twenty twenty-one, K nine Ranger was confronted, actually was deployed on a subject who barricaded in his home. That ran outside with a knife. When the K nine deployed, the suspect stabbed our T nine, but allowed the officers to safely take the suspect into custody. The next unit I'll talk about is our Impact Unit. This unit works closely with our Department of Community Response and other city departments to collectively address persons experiencing homelessness. Last year, they responded to over five hundred and eighty locations based on community complaints that required assistance from P D. Example of what Impact does outside of uh enforcement. Uh, last year, they responded to a person experiencing homelessness um based on three-one-one call. Um, that subject's name was Chuck. He was seventy-one years old and had broken his leg due to being hit by a car. Impact uh officers made the the subject a medical appointment, took him to a medical appointment. In which he was issued a wheelchair, and then they eventually got him placed in the X Street Shelter. Final unit I'll mention from our Metro Division is the Traffic Team. There are currently ten sworn motor officers and six detectives and one professional staff. The division is is the purpose is to reduce collisions through traffic education and enforcement. And respond to major collision investigations. We currently deploy two motor officers per man. In twenty twenty-one, officers issued almost eleven thousand citation warnings. The traffic investigators, who are on call twenty-four hours a day, year-round, responded and investigated fifty-three fatal collisions. Traffic complaints continue to be one of the top concerns when our officers attend community meetings. Recent community efforts by the unit include a social media campaign every Tuesday where we do a traffic education video. The second division of the Office of Specialized Services is our Contract Services. The department has officers assigned in supporting public safety and outreach for Sacramento Regional Transit. The Thomas Young High School District and the Marijuana Compliance Team and managing the Urban Area Security Initiative. For Regional Transit, we provide decent services for the entire county that are R T service. The Thomas Young High School Resource Officers provide safety, mentorship, and guidance to youth at their school. They serve, working closely with both school districts and state administrators. Marijuana Compliance Team has seven officers, one professional staff. They conduct investigative follow-ups on potential illegal marijuana grow operations. Last year, they conducted thirty-two search warrants, sixty inspections. Uh, issued two point eight million dollars in administrative fines, seized over fifty-seven hundred plants, eighty-five hundred pounds of marijuana. Located twenty-three guns and made thirty arrests. The Urban Security Initiative is managed by four S P D personnel, two which are sworn. The grant funding provides regional training, equipment, exercises related to homeland security. The final division that I'd like to discuss from the Office of um is Community Advancement. Formerly known as Outreach Engagement. There are six sworn officers assigned to that unit. The purposes of the unit is coordinating community outreach events, connecting and coordinating community-based organizations. And recruiting to get a diverse pool of candidates hired into our organization. The unit helps coordinate and participate in peace walks, facilitates academy experience for community members. Manages the Cops and Kids Summer Camps for youth ages eight to fourteen. Adopt a classroom program which runs seven months for fourth graders. Uh, manages the pedals program, which gives away a hundred and fifty bicycles, helmets, and bicycle safety faucets. Shop with the cops during Christmas time, outreach with the Sacramento Youth Commission. Um, helping with the Lex Program at Sac State. Partnering on the SHOT Youth Diversity Program, which um serves children ages twelve to sixteen. And manages the SAC PAL Program, which has um a rugby program that was just on the news recently. Um, sea, snowboarding events, youth leadership camp, fishing, mountain biking, and boxing for that industry. Two programs I'd like to highlight is the Criminal Justice Magnet Academy, which are at Kyron Johnson, McLaughlin. Grant, Kennedy, and Intercum High School. Officers there are cross-trained, trained as certified teachers and interact with over five hundred and thirty-four students. And as the um chief had earlier earlier mentioned, uh, they have a hundred percent graduation rate. The second program I'd like to highlight is our Sacramento Police Det Program with twenty participants, youth ages fourteen to twenty years old. I am graduate of that program and later will be a police officer. Uh, now, um, turn the presentation of Deputy Chief Green.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Adam Green, and I am a Deputy Chief with the Police Department, and I oversee the Office of Investigations. The Office of Investigations is comprised of three divisions, the Detectives Division, the Research and Development Division, and the Personnel Services Division. The Office of Investigations has a staff of nearly two hundred and forty employees. This summary of the Office of Investigations will not encompass every responsibility completed by our office, but it will provide an idea of some of our duties. First, I'd like to talk about our Detectives Division. The Detectives Division is comprised of the, I'm sorry, comprised of the many specialty investigative units. Um, and also includes our forensic and CSI staff, our record staff, Evidence and Property Section, and our Real-Time Crime Center. Some of the specialty investigative units within the Detectives Division includes the Neighborhood Crimes Unit, our homicide teams. Felony assaults, missing persons, gang investigations, domestic violence, human trafficking. And child and adult sex assaults. Our Detectives Division also works closely with community organizations. Uh, like When Everyone Acts, Violence Ends, also known as WEAVE. We actually have a WEAVE social worker that is assigned in our Domestic Violence Unit and works hand-in-hand with our detectives. Also, within our Investigations Division is our Real-Time Crime Center. This team is responsible for police observation devices, also known as the POD program. Which significantly increases our ability to solve crimes, locate stolen vehicles, and be responsive to crimes in progress. In addition to the gathering and analysis of data, this team is responsible for the construction, installation, and maintenance of the hundred and twenty police department pods within the city. In twenty twenty-one, the police department responded to over a thousand calls for service that were generated by PODs. Another aspect of our Detectives Division is our partnership with federal agencies. Another aspect of our Detectives Division is our partnership with federal agencies. We currently have six detectives assigned to federal task forces, including the FBI Safe Streets Task Force, the A T F Task Force, a Drug Enforcement Task Force, the U.S. Marshals Task Force, and a Joint Terrorism Task Force. In two thousand and twenty-one, our Detectives Division assigned four thousand three hundred and thirty-three investigations and responded to seventy-seven call-outs, investigations that required an immediate response of detectives. We investigated eighty-six separate human trafficking cases and fifty-eight homicides. Our officers and detectives also assisted in locating more than sixteen hundred missing persons. Through April of this year, our homicide detectives have investigated twenty-two homicides, and our homicide clearance rate for those is seventy-seven percent. The average for our four comparable cities is fifty-eight percent. Next, I'd like to talk about our Personnel Division. The Personnel Services Division is responsible for all backgrounds in hiring, the human resource-related matters, and oversight of our student trainee program. With regard to hiring and backgrounds, in two thousand and twenty-one, seventeen hundred people completed applications through the city for the position of police officer. Of those, eight hundred and sixty-nine met the minimum qualifications and were referred to the Police Department. Throughout two thousand and twenty-one, our background investigators conducted twenty oral interview and physical assessment test days for candidates. And as a result of completing and passing those testing processes, our investigators completed three hundred and twelve backgrounds, each of which required approximately fifty hours of work. In the end, in two thousand and twenty-one, we graduated forty-three new Sacramento Police Officers, which is approximately five percent of the applicants who met the minimum qualifications. We're currently completing the hiring process for our July Academy and are slated for thirty-eight police officer recruits and twelve community service officer recruits. As part of our hiring pipeline, S P D employs student trainees. These positions are held by college students attending school and working towards their degrees. These positions allow young people to maintain part-time employment and gain valuable knowledge and experience within the Police Department. We currently have sixteen students throughout the department and are working on a partnership with C S U S, the Crime and Intelligence Analysis Program, to create student positions specific to our crime analysis unit. Lastly, I'd like to talk about our Training Division. The Training Division is focused on developing skilled professional police officers and community service officers within the Police Department. They provide some of the best and most contemporary law enforcement training in our country. Our Training Division uses the most modern technologies such as virtual reality and reality-based scenarios. And the division has grown significantly in the last few years in response to our desire to build upon our ongoing training philosophies and D O J recommendations of best practices. Our Police Academy is comprised of a staff of nine trainers who run two six-month month police academies each year, as well as one ten-week C S O Officer Academy. In addition to the academies, our trainers provide both pre- and post-academy training to our new recruits in order to assure they have all the tools necessary to do their job, the Sacramento Police Officers and Community Service Officers. The Sacramento Police Department is trusted by as many as twenty other law enforcement agencies to provide basic academy training to their new officers. Following the academy and post-academy training, graduates enter the field training program where they participate in six to eight months of training in the field where they learn to apply the skills developed in the Police Academy. In total, our Training Division provides approximately twenty-three hundred hours of training for every new police officer before they are on their own in the field. Also within our Training Division is our Research and Development Unit. The Research and Development Unit is primarily responsible for identifying and developing contemporary training for our in-service employees. The goal of this unit is to assure that our officers are equipped with the most relevant and effective knowledge and skills to assure for the safety of our community. A recent example of their training is the implementation of the Critical Decision Model, which teaches ethics proportionality, sanctity of life, and values. In compliance with S B nine seventy-eight, all of our training curriculum are posted on our department's transparency page. That concludes my presentation, and I'd like to turn it over to Captain Marnie Stegarts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Captain Marnie Stegarts of the Office of the Chief, and I'll be presenting regarding the Administrative Services and Specialized Services Divisions tonight. Administrative Services is comprised of our Policy Standards and Transparency Sections, the Government Affairs Unit, Employee Wellness, and Public Safety Information Technology. Specialized Services is comprised of Internal Affairs, the Public Information Office, and Media Services, Criminal Intelligence Unit, and the Chief's Office Personnel Staff, Professional Staff, excuse me. To increase our accountability and transparency to the community, we have made it a priority to expand our ability to make information available to the public on platforms, on multiple platforms, on a wide range of topics and areas of interest. In two thousand and nineteen, at the recommendation of D O J, the Police Department reformed the investigative process for all complaints brought against employees, resulting in four hundred and forty-six complaints. That number has dropped to two hundred and seventy-seven in two thousand and twenty and two hundred and seventy-three in two thousand and twenty-one. In recent years, several legislative changes have taken place, which we have responded to, including S B sixteen. This is updated transparency legislation that became effective January one of two thousand and twenty-two. S B sixteen mandates disclosure of administrative and criminal investigations of sustained findings of excessive force or unreasonable force, failure to intervene in unreasonable or excessive force, unlawful arrest or search and seizure, or discrimination. In order to comply with this law, we've created new processes, policy, and procedure to ensure we are providing information on sustained internal affairs investigations in a timely manner. This law is retroactive, and to date, we have identified forty-seven incidents that are subject to disclosure based on S B sixteen. As you're likely already aware, effective January one of two thousand and nineteen, S B fourteen twenty-one required the release of all reports of discharge of a firearm by an officer at a person, resulting in injury or great, excuse me, in death or great bodily injury, sustained findings that an officer engaged in sexual assault against a member of the public, or sustained findings of dishonesty or perjury. Within the parameters of S B fourteen twenty-one, retroactive to nineteen sixty-eight, we've identified over just, just over two hundred incidents that are releasable and related to fifty-two open P R A requests. The estimate of work required to produce those documents, video, and audio is projected to be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand hours. Based on previous averages of reduction rates, it's projected a staff of ten full-time employees can be expected to do ten thousand to fifteen thousand hours of reduction work annually. To date, we have released two thousand two hundred and sixty media files to the department's YouTube page pertaining to thirty-three critical incidents. Of those, two thousand one hundred and seventy-three media files or S B sixteen or S B fourteen twenty-one records with our additional transparency efforts include expedited release within thirty days of audio and video for all officer-involved shootings and incidents of significant public interest. Our department has built and continues to expand upon our transparency page on the Police Department website, which includes all items identified releasable regarding officer-involved shootings, death in custody, incidents of public interest, all education and training materials, D O J reports and recommendations, also name a few. Other efforts include the U S D O J Community Relation Service, Sacramento Police Foundation's Police Data Initiative, I A C P Trust Initiative Program, and bi-weekly Internal Affairs and Office of Public Safety Accountability Staff Meetings to focus on case updates and process efficiency to improve oversight transparency. Internal Affairs staff has grown from five sworn and one professional staff in two thousand and eighteen to eight sworn and one professional staff currently. Professional standards and transparency units have grown from two sworn and one professional staff in two thousand and eighteen to seven sworn and an authorized eighteen professional staff as we manage and comply with changes in law, recommendations, and transparency strides, though only five of our professional staff positions are currently filled. Our Government Affairs Unit handles Public Records Act requests for the Police Department, not related to S B sixteen and S B fourteen twenty-one. There are currently a one hundred and eight open requests for data, including statistics, arrests, crime trends, pod footage, and nine-one-one audio, among many others. The professional staff of four handle approximately twelve hundred P R A requests per year, along with an average of two hundred contracts, council reports, and city attorney consultations per year. There are also over two hundred requests pending for body worn and in-car camera associated with collisions, various reports, and calls for service. The Policy and Personnel Management Team manages and utilizes multiple software and tracking technologies used by the entire department. The staff is also instrumental in creating, revising, and publishing all general orders, manuals, and roll call training bulletins, and ensuring compliance. Since October of twenty-one, they have produced thirty-five policy and training documents. They act as a liaison with risk management for all claims against the department and work with the City Attorney's Office in civil litigation. They are the primary point of contact for research on all legislative updates. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Inspections and Standard Team began to conduct monthly body worn camera and report audits for the constitutional legality of arrests made by Sacramento Police Officers. Each month, ten percent of all arrests are reviewed by the team, averaging about twelve hundred inspections annually. Through March of twenty-two, there have been eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight arrests, and the team has audited one thousand two hundred and two of those. Of the twelve hundred cases, ninety-nine point eight percent were found to have no issues of policy or legal concerns. The team has also conducted monthly audits and inspections of injury and property settlements paid out by the city involving police officers. They track all uses of designated military equipment and ensure compliance with A B four E one. Quarterly, they audit, conduct audits of assets and/or activities that involve high risk. They maintain and audit the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, R I P A Report, monthly, excuse me, bimonthly, to ensure the compliance with A B nine fifty-three. Based on recommendations from D O J, we created the Force Investigations Team in two thousand and twenty-one. It's comprised of a sergeant and three officers. This team responds to all use of force incidents involving any serious bodily injury, officer-involved shootings, and in-custody deaths. In addition to fit, we have established a Use of Force Review Board at the recommendation of D O J, and this board reviews each use of force that is documented. There's a parallel training review board that independently reviews cases as assigned to ensure there's compliance with current training and policy. Finally, Lieutenant Galliano is our liaison between the Community Police Review Commission and the Police Department. He attends monthly and ad hoc meetings of the Commission, facilitating research and producing data requested by the Commission. Some of the current projects being worked on with the Commission are the finalization of the gender diverse persons, media relations, imprisonment amendment policies, and responding to those associated feedback, as well as compiling requested information for recruiting and retention programs. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention. I will now turn it over to Brenda Delgado to present on the operating budget. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Brenda Delgado, Police Administrative Manager. The Police Department's F Y twenty-three proposed operating budget totals two hundred and twenty-one point seven one million dollars. This represents an increase of approximately fourteen point oh five million dollars from the department's F Y twenty-two amended budget. The increase is primarily from approved labor contracts and vehicle expenses. The ten point seven million, ten point seven one million dollar increase in employee services or labor is mainly attributable to labor contracts approved during the second half of fiscal year twenty-two with the S P O A, Local Thirty-Nine, and S C X C A Labor Union. Contract-related labor increases for the S P O A contract approved on February eighth are inclusive of both F Y twenty-two and F Y twenty-three costs in total eight point four million dollars. The remaining two point three million is from the Local Thirty-Nine and S C X C A Labor Contract approved on March second and is also inclusive of increased F Y twenty-two and F Y twenty-three costs. It also includes the labor budget of the fifteen police officer positions for the two thousand and twenty-one COPS Hiring Program Grant authorized as part of the fiscal year twenty-two mid-year budget adjustment and the eleven professional staff positions for the Transparency Unit authorized on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. As previously noted by Chief Lester, labor accounts for approximately ninety-one percent of the P D's total operating budget. The eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase in services and supplies and property is primarily from fuel and vehicle repair and maintenance that is centrally budgeted by city fleet. These budgets are based on the fleet size and previous expenditures and usage while factoring in anticipated, anticipated expense rates and increases. The thirteen and a half million services and supplies budget supports critical operational costs such as vehicle repair and maintenance at three and a half million dollars, fuel at two million dollars, information technology at one point nine million dollars, and utilities and telecommunications at six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Other significant service and supplies expenditures include, but are not limited to, travel and training at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, safety equipment at four hundred thousand dollars, sexual assault testing and examinations at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and consumable supplies. These amounts are only estimates and vary from year to year. The multi-year operating project increase is attributable to annual fleet replacement. Four point nine six million of the increase will be moved to Public Works's F Y twenty-three Police Fleet Replacement Myop, as is done annually with this, with this budget. The external funds credit increase is attributable to the F T E cost of the fifteen C H P grant positions and eleven Transparency Unit Myop positions. I'd like to take a moment to address some of the concerns expressed during recent Budget and Audit Committee and City Council meetings regarding the history of the Police Department's budget augmentation. This table compares the F Y twenty-one and F Y twenty-two amended budget to the F Y twenty-three proposed budget as they appear in the city's official budget documents. It summarizes S P D's operational funding needs before credits for labor offsets are applied. After labor offset credits are applied, the net operating budget total decreases to credit the operating budget for labor costs that are supported by grants, externally funded programs, and multi-year operating projects. Examples include, but are not limited to, the two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty-one COPS Hiring Program Grant, the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant, the Public Records Release Myop, Traffic Enforcement Overtime Grant, and the Cannabis Compliance Team. As displayed here, during the F Y twenty-one twenty-two budget development process, P D's Measure U multi-year operating project funding was discontinued, and the corresponding offset was removed from P D's budget. The Measure U resources that had previously supported P D's operational costs were distributed to other departments to support council and community priorities. This change resulted in general fund resources replacing the Measure U funding, but it did not change the department's operational costs. Next, I wanted to provide some updates on the Measure U operating budget. The F Y twenty-three P D Measure U budget totals five point seven three million and supports sixty-three point five F T E for the Hiring Pipeline Program. The program includes ten point five F T E student trainee positions, seven F T E Community Service Officer One positions, and forty-six F T E Community Service Officer Two positions. About three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of the total is for miscellaneous services and supplies and equipment for these positions. The program has been successful in recruiting and retaining diverse candidates and preparing them for careers in law enforcement and professional staff positions. Currently, the incumbents in the student trainee classification are about eighty-two percent diverse. The last Community Service Officer Academy was seventy-five percent diverse, and the current Police Officer Academy that graduates in June was seventy-one percent diverse on day one of the academy. The June twenty twenty-two C S O Academy is estimated to start at eighty-six percent diverse with eleven of fourteen C S O Academy recruits being female. The next Police Officer Academy participants are still being finalized. As mentioned in previous presentations, the Office of Violence Prevention will be, will be moving to the Police Department effective July first. The O V P's funding and F T E numbers are not included in the information previously presented as part of the Police Department budget. O V P is one hundred percent funded by Measure U and includes two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for two F T Es and one point four one million dollars for, for multi-year operating projects. The Myop fund gang prevention and intervention task force contracts and miscellaneous operating costs for a total of one point seven million dollars. As this is a recent change, we are still working on learning how O V P functions and how their funding is allocated and spent. Next up is Natalie Weaver, who will present the department's capital improvement program and multi-year operating projects.
My name is Natalie Weaver. I'm the administrative officer in the Police Department's Fiscal Operations Division. The FY twenty-three Capital Improvement Program, which was discussed earlier today in the two P M. meeting, totals four point zero eight million to support long-term investments in technology, infrastructure, and equipment. Multi-year operating projects support operational needs expected to take more than one fiscal year to complete. For FY twenty-three, PD's proposed myops totaled six point three five million from the general fund. Some of these projects include the Impact Myop, which provides overtime resources to provide impact services seven days a week, the IT Critical Infrastructure Program at four hundred seventy-three thousand dollars for increased software licensing and maintenance expenses, police fleet replacements. This is the portion of funding that will be moved to Public Works FY twenty-three Police Fleet Replacement Myop. And in addition, we have our police observation devices myop and the Shot Spotter myop. Thank you for this for your time this evening. I will now return the presentation to Chief Kathy Lester.
Thank you, Natalie. Um, just to wrap up, one thing I wanted to mention is we actually also have twenty-seven recruits in our current police academy, and that will help also offset our vacancy number. Um, I will wrap up the budget just by talking about strategic planning. Strategic planning, we know, is really important for any organization, and as leaders in public service, we have to be able to forecast our emerging trends and really strategically plan for the future. We've begun a very significant strategic planning process here at the department, and we intend to use it as a guiding document to identify our future goals and priorities. This will help our department properly plan for upcoming needs and expenses in future years, guide our budget and our service priorities. Our management team has conducted a preliminary analysis, and we have identified several areas in which we are going to establish working groups, which will include members of our community to help guide this process. We know that we have to identify and anticipate future costs, our ability to leverage grants and other alternative funding services, equipment replacement, and labor costs are also a challenge. On service delivery, we're looking to improve overall efficiency, increase customer satisfaction, and reduce incidence of crime. On technology and technology advancements, we're exploring cloud-based storage and related devices, emerging investigative tools, and improved training. Also, working on growing our professional ranks and increasing diversity at all levels and ranks of the department, focusing on professional development and increase civilianization, our expansion of our professional staff. And then finally, um, city growth, which is really exciting. Uh, we look at that through the lens of public safety by looking at workload, our new neighborhoods, density and infill issues, and really just changing public safety issues and things that we are challenged with. So with that, I'd like to just wrap up the budget presentation and move quickly on to asset forfeiture. Mayor Steinberg, would you like me to stop here? Just continue?
Let's continue. Let's complete the presentation.
It'll be brief. So, um, I'd like to present the FY twenty-two twenty-three Asset Forfeiture Plan. As required by city policy, we need to bring this plan forward as part of our department's budget presentation. Both state and federal guidelines prohibit law enforcement agencies from budgeting future asset forfeiture earnings. And in addition, these guidelines also state the asset forfeiture revenue must be used for law enforcement purposes only and cannot replace or supplant existing resources that are made available to a law enforcement agency. This master plan summarizes new revenues received since last year's presentation and includes categorical allocations defined in federal guidelines, and as required by state law, part of the funding must be maintained and accounted for separately in support of youth programs that are anti-gang and anti-drug focused. The Asset Forfeiture Master Plan provides additional resources to support the Police Department's unfunded operational costs. Some of these things include deferred facilities and maintenance improvements, aircraft operations and maintenance, a replacement of safety equipment, and innovative emergency emerging technologies to improve service delivery. Past asset forfeiture investments have included funding of our Shot Spotter program, funding of air asset purchases, uh, public safety headquarters, security cameras, roll call and substation improvements, our spider tech technology, which is that customer service platform I mentioned earlier, um, as well as a substation lockers, uh, purchase and installation. Asset forfeiture resources were transferred to a CIP project, and this was a one-time expense to purchase additional lockers and install power sources. So this will, um, end our presentation of the Asset Forfeiture Master Plan. I'll just touch quickly on the support of community organizations in anti-drug and gang prevention. Under state law, fifteen percent of all of the funds that we receive must be maintained in a separate account and have to be used for funding youth programs and combat drug use and gang activity. Uh, with the addition of the Office of Violence Prevention to the department, we plan to establish a fair and equitable process to identify the best providers to deliver these services. Prior programs have included the Sacramento Police Foundation, the Criminal Justice Magnet Academy, our cadet program, Sacramento Police Activities League, uh, City of Refuge, the COPS and Kids Summer Camp, Brother to Brother, and the Neighborhood Wellness Foundation. All of these funded programs have been collaborative and involve partnerships with, um, you know, collaborative educators, partner parents, sworn law enforcement officers, community-based organizations, and local businesses. And with that, I will end our presentation of the Police Department's budget and asset forfeiture and available for any questions, as is my team.
Wow, very, very, very thorough, um, and very important. We really appreciate it, Chief, and your entire team. Let's, uh, Madam Clerk, what, how many, uh, participants do we have from the public who want to testify?
So, Mayor, currently have four hands raised to make public comment on this item.
Okay, let's hear from the four members of the public.
The first is Courtney.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Courtney, and I'm a Sacramento resident. Um, the fact that a reporting change uncovered another forty-seven million dollars that the public was unaware about in last year's police budget is very concerning to me. And now we're up to a two hundred twenty-one point seven million dollar proposal, a record number. As you all know, where we put our dollars as a city reflects what we care about. This is what the budget tells me about our city. The fact that this proposal is a status quo budget, meaning that little or no changes are being made to the previous budget, shows me that we're not looking at data to see if SACPD is effectively serving our community. How do we expect to budget our budget to reflect our values and changing priorities if we use a status quo budget and make little changes each year? We're taking a reactive approach rather than a proactive or preventative approach. A reactive approach values responding to incidents after they have occurred, locking up community members in dire need of support, direct services, housing, and resources. A proactive or preventative approach would look like taking this two hundred twenty-one million dollar budget and reallocating funding to some of the programs that this budget currently does not have the money for, including housing, services for unhoused community members, violent prevention and youth services, and the big seven climate change ideas that were discussed last week. Budgets are a reflection of the values and priorities of the community. These budget decisions are active choices that the city council and managers need to be accountable for. We're working from a deficit model. When there's enough money in our budget, it's just prioritized in a way that doesn't align with our values. When you're voting in June, please consider realigning this two hundred twenty million towards areas that care for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Greetings, Sacramento City Council. I'm Keon Bliss. I'm, uh, the District Four Commissioner for, uh, the Sacramento Police Community Review Commission. And I want to lift up, um, a few comments, uh, that I noticed from this presentation. That SPD leadership, um, likes to remind us how badly they were impacted and how they are still recovering from the Great Recession. But like, you know, and also frequently remind us on what seems like the yearly basis of the threat of rising crime, which several on this council also seem to agree with. A few points I want to share on, uh, what I've studied from the last twelve years or so of the budgets, uh, just in the last, uh, couple of weeks. According to the fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nine actuals, the budget expenditures in two thousand eight dollars totaled over a hundred and thirty-three million dollars for a total FT budget or FT budget of, uh, one thousand ninety-six. That amount in twenty twenty-two dollars is valued at one hundred and seventy-six million dollars. Uh, so not, so not only have you, like, if this proposed budget is correct, and last year's proposed budget or approved budget was correct. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
So, uh, not only is that like, so not only has the, like, has the department recovered as far as its budget totals that it lost, uh, beforehand, but I'm also noting that you have seven hundred and sixty-nine sworn positions that are there, plus forty, like, up to forty recruits or so in the pipeline. Either way, this budget dwarfs what SACPD has ever had. This is an all-time high. Even though, and and not to mention the fact that we're now learning that not only is this budget higher than it's ever been, but it's been high as as high as this amount for years at a time.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
You didn't give me back my time that I stopped because I was told to unmute.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jennifer Holden.
Good evening, Mayor and, um, council members. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I listened to the entire presentation, and, uh, there's a lot to take in. However, uh, from District Five, I've I've met many of our officers now. They're hardworking. They're doing the best they can to take good care of us. We need to keep their staffing up. Uh, the ratio needs to go up. So please keep that in mind that there's there's good work being done, and we just need a little bit more of it to be done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Brandon Black.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. This is Brandon Black, Director of Public Policy and Advocacy with Sacramento Metro Chamber. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight as you continue your budget deliberations. The Metro Chamber is calling in tonight to express our strong support for public safety. Every year, the Chamber asks our membership, made up mostly of small business from throughout the region, what is the most important thing affecting them and their ability to serve their customers? Public safety has risen to the very top of that list. Additionally, polling indicates that this is not unique to the business community, but that it is the number one issue for over seventy percent of Sacramento residents. We know that violent crime is on the rise across the state and that safety is top of mind in each of our neighborhoods. We also know that government's chief responsibility is to provide for the public safety of the community for which it serves. We strongly encourage the City Council tonight to support efforts that will provide adequate resources to the Police Department to serve that critical function. How we invest in our city and how we allocate dollars is is the most transparent and clear way for us to define our priorities. Our community's priority is undoubtedly focused on the real impacts that crime is having on our quality of life and on our ability to enjoy all the great things Sacramento has to offer its half-million residents. It is important that we support the peacekeepers and do our best to curb this uptick in violent crime to ensure a prosperous future for everyone. Lastly, we offer our thanks to the men and women in public service who every day put their lives on the line to keep us safe. You are appreciated. Again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak this evening. We appreciate you, as always, for your dedication to our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Amy Gardner. Amy Gardner is our last speaker on this item. Amy Gardner, if you'll unmute.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council members. As a resident of the East Sacramento and the Midtown area, I thoroughly support the proposed budget for the Sacramento Police Department. The public safety is always our city's government's top priority. With the increase in violent crime in our neighborhood, the SACPD is a key partner both when crimes are being committed and in finding solutions to increase safety for all city Sacramento city citizens. We want to support the people that are going out and, um, defending us, protecting us, and we want to make sure that they have the equipment and the staffing levels that are required to bring high level of safety that we're not experiencing today back to our city. We love our city. We want to have safe streets. We want to have enjoyable parks, and we want to have the support that our SACPD needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Very good. Thank you to the members, the public, for calling in. Let's turn it over to council again. We're not voting tonight. This is an opportunity to provide feedback and really hear from our colleagues. I see Councilmember Vang uh, is the only one I see up so far, but I'm sure others will join. I know I have a couple of comments, so thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just first wanted to take this opportunity to thank Chief Lester, uh, for the presentation and also to our staff and all the officers for that thorough, uh, presentation of police budget. Um, I don't have questions directly on the budget, but I do have questions regarding some department change that was announced today. I think it's no secret, uh, for me where I I am in terms of how we spend our dollars. And for me, I want to ensure that we spend our dollars in addressing public safety, like what the public caller said. Um, and for me, public safety is addressing it upstream. It means investing in prevention and violence disruption and interruption. Um, a caller mentioned that she wants to see safe streets and enjoyable parks, and I would say you're absolutely right, and I would be in alignment with you on that, and these are the things that we should be investing in. Um, I understand the importance of ensuring that we can respond once an incident has occurred. But as I shared before with this council and the public, I believe that the more we invest in prevention and changing the social environment for our most underserved communities is how we can really begin to change our system and ensure that less crime will occur. Uh, my question really is really regarding just the department change that was announced today. And, um, this question is directed towards City Manager Chan and also Chief Lester. Today, you announced that the Office of Violence Prevention will now be under SACPD. Um, and I just want to have a better understanding of why this change was made. Um, when I came on to the council, I know the the mayor proposed DCR, the Department of Community Response. And as I understood it, it was, you know, to make a bold investment to reimagine public safety through violence prevention and and non-police strategy, which was my interpretation, uh, in addressing, uh, violence and homelessness. So I wanted to have a better understanding, you know, did this not work under DCR before? You know, what was the reason for the change? Were there lessons learned, uh, before this decision was made? And just, I want to be able to to ensure that I have a good understanding of that and also the public as well. And so definitely want to make sure that, um, I give you both an opportunity to to talk about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. I'll respond to that, and it's a pretty, uh, brief answer. It's probably anticlimactic in some instances. You know, as, uh, the presentation slide showed earlier, the Office of Violence Prevention started as one individual out of the city manager's office, and, uh, throughout the years, we added one additional analyst to help with, um, you know, contract management and and the like. And as our investments continue to go towards prevention intervention, it became very obvious that we couldn't handle it out of that office. And putting, uh, an Office of Violence Prevention under DCR, uh, was a little bit of a stopgap. Just, you know, we're just starting to ramp up DCR. It has a full workload and a half with homelessness and the like, and so it was a very practical, uh, decision I made, and it's already been made. It's not effective July one. I guess officially it is. Uh, but we've moved everything under the Police Department, and for a couple of reasons. I mean, the Police Department has many of these CBO contracts that deal with prevention and intervention already. Uh, but but moreover, it's really because, uh, there's a whole department standing behind, uh, the two individuals in Office of Violence Prevention, and the synergy between the management of, you know, the the contracts under SACPD and then under Violence Prevention, it just made a lot of sense. And and, uh, I just want to remind everyone here that where where it sits, it has really less to do with how much emphasis we're going to place on a particular program, because, uh, all the the departments that are presenting to you here today and throughout, uh, the budget process, they all report to me anyway. So it is, uh, it's not like one gets more attention if it's, uh, out of the manager's office. This was more of a practical move, and and so, uh, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if, uh, the chief has anything to add to that, but that's really what, uh, where we ended up.
Thanks, um, Manager Chan. I really appreciate that. Chief Lester, uh, you know, I have had opportunities to speak with you, and I know you have, um, a new type of leadership that's holistic, that is really about prevention as well. I guess my question to you, now that this department, Office of Violence Prevention, is under you, uh, under the, um, Police Department, really want to learn a little bit about how you see yourself building trust with the community for those that may not want to, you know, engage with the police, right? And would love to hear a little bit more about just, you know, your vision on how we can begin to build that trust, given that the Office of Violence Prevention is now under a PD.
Sure. Thank you for asking the question, and I hope, um,
Sure. Thank you for asking the question. And I hope, and I really appreciate too, your emphasis and support of community-based organizations and prevention and intervention. And I've said this very publicly, you know, since I started, how important a prevention and intervention piece is, and it has to be accompanied by a very balanced approach with enforcement. And so what I hope to do with Dr. Clavo, and we've known each other for a long time, is just really support her in those efforts. And I think that she's also going to be able to support the work that the Police Department is trying to do. She is certainly an expert in that area, has a lot of community connections, as do our officers. And I know that we have had some, some good success working with some of our community-based organizations. And you had actually asked for us to return with a presentation on our, on our violence reduction strategy and efforts. And I'd like to come back to you and talk about what our plan is. And actually, I was just talking today about how to present that in conjunction with our efforts with youth and what the city is trying to do on a wide scale, so it's not just the Police Department. So one of the things that I see maybe a little bit differently is I think that we can be very effective as a city if we all work closely together. I know there's great work being done from the city. There's great work being done for community-based organizations. As far as your question about like, what are we going to do to help really improve community relations? That's why we have such a strong emphasis on service and professionalism, because I know that we can, we can have initiatives, we can have big programs. But if we can't serve people in the way they need to be served and start building that trust on an individual basis, it's going to be very hard for us to progress forward as a law enforcement profession. I think we do that well here in Sacramento. I certainly think that we can expand on those efforts. And it's something I'm not only trying to emphasize, but also measure and hope to have more metrics by the end of the year. But certainly, metrics on what our community-based organizations are doing and then how we at the Police Department can support them. We've certainly done a lot of work on youth and, and violence intervention, on grant funding and working with our community-based providers. As a matter of fact, there was a time where a significant number of grants came to the Police Department, and we were really like the financial manager for community-based organizations. And so that role suited us very well, and we hope that we can support the work that we're doing citywide.
Thanks, Chief Lester. I know summer is just around the corner, and ensuring that we have a citywide strategy on violence prevention and interruption is going to be really key. Definitely, I would like to make that direction, Mayor, you know, so that we could bring something back to the full council, given that summer is just around the corner, and I want to make sure that we're ready. The Police Department, but particularly making sure that we support our grassroots organization on the ground that's on the front line, that has the pulse of the community. So those are my comments, Mayor, and would also like to provide that direction on the citywide strategy, and perhaps Dr. Clavo can report back on that. Thank you.
I know that the C-Manager indicated to me, given that summer is coming, that whether it's a full council presentation or just a report back, that the manager will report on the, the plan, so to speak, to increase our attention this summer on the prevention and early intervention side. And I think that's appropriate, and we'll look forward to that. Okay, I've got Councilmember Harris, then Valenzuela, then Shneur.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I'd like to do is thank Chief Lester for a very thorough presentation. I think that the information you presented is probably new to many people. Certainly, those who are watching the City Council member, the City Council meeting, were not aware of all the intricacies of running the Police Department. How many divisions you have, how you divide up the labor between patrol and investigations and so forth. It was really a great report on the difficulty and the intricacy of running a police force in a city this size. I'd like to thank Howard Chan, actually, for one of the best decisions I think he's ever made, which was to hire Chief Lester. And I'd like to thank Chief Lester for choosing her deputy chiefs, because I think you've created a really dynamic team. I know all of these individuals and their first cabin. And as we said with the fire budget, I think we're looking at a new day here with our Police Department. It started with, with Chief Hawn, and Kathy Lester brings a very different dynamic to our Police Department. I think we're on the right track here. When I talk to my constituents, their chief concern absolutely is public safety. And obviously, public safety, ensuring public safety has become a much more difficult task than it was even five years ago, as evidenced by the amount of guns that are floating around on the streets and the amount of violent crimes, the homicide rate in our city. All of these indicators, you know, indicate to me that we've got some significant issues to deal with here. And it is true that we have less staff on PD than we did a number of years ago before the Great Recession. So the difficulty has increased. The number of calls for services skyrocketed. Staff is low. And so it's a real balancing act, trying to get more efficiency out of the officers, out of all the operations that they conduct. And I'm very appreciative of our police force. I know how tough this job is. And it is, it's really pretty amazing what officers achieve and what they endure in a day's work. Again, my constituents want public safety. They want to enhance public safety. They feel like things are slipping. There's no doubt about it. You know, with the struggles that we have with the homeless population and violent crime, this is the number one concern in our city. And the amount of money allocated to the police budget seems to me very appropriate. You know, moving the Office of Violence Prevention into the police domain, I think can create a real synergy. I think that Dr. Clavo and Kathy do have a strong relationship and are completely familiar with CBOs and what they can achieve and as well how they can achieve it. So I think that this is not only a practical move, but I do think that there is going to be a synergistic effect. And I'm rather enthusiastic to see the results of this move. I think it'll be very positive for our city overall. You know, as far as the budget goes, again, a great presentation. I absolutely support what you've presented, and I think that, well, I think that given the circumstances that we're facing in our city and the stresses that are presented, using all the different materials, like unmanned, I mean unmanned aerial systems and pod cams, and, you know, the intensity of the investigations, I really feel that the police force is moving in a very strong and positive direction in Sacramento, and I appreciate you all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, thank you, Chief Lester, for that very detailed presentation. I was trying my best to like, take as much notes as I could over here, so I might ask some questions that seem redundant, and some of this might be stuff that you just need to give me later, which I apologize if I missed some of this. But that was a lot of information in a few short minutes there. So I guess I just start from where you started with some of your framing on staffing letters. Can you tell me, because I cannot actually find this on the city website to save myself, what the level of funding was in 2007, 2008?
I do not know, but I can get that for you.
Okay, because I'd also love to know what the number of calls for service were that year and what the crime per capita was, because you know, in our budgets now, you all tell us crimes per, I think, a thousand residents. And I'd love to get those numbers, just to put the sworn numbers and level of funding and stuff in context. The other question I think is for Captain Stiders, and I hope I'm saying your name correctly, Captain. You mentioned that complaints to the department have gone down. I was wondering if that correlated at all with OPAH standing up. Are those duplicative numbers or they combined numbers? Just to get a better sense of what that means.
We do not, anything that goes through OPAH is not differentiated from what comes to us as a complaint. What comes to us as a complaint comes to us as a complaint. That was the change that we made in 2019. We used to have what we called inquiries versus formal investigations. And so that's where the change came in and where we took their recommendation from DOJ and made everything a formal investigation. So every complaint that came in was then looked at as a formal, no longer an inquiry. So anything that OPAH sends to us, it becomes a formal investigation. So those numbers didn't go down because of that, because of OPAH.
Okay, that's cool.
Our assumption is likely it had something to do with COVID. That probably affected things greatly.
Oh, that makes sense. Less interactions face-to-face. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you, Captain. That was my, because you said that, and I was like, wait, that seems like a significant data point. The other question I had is breakdown of 911 calls for service. Because we talk about calls for service, but we obviously know that calls are not, you know, always the same. You know, sometimes it's a call, a bunch of calls for a significant event that, you know, take the downtown shooting, for example. I'm sure you got more than one call, and then there's calls that are more incidental. Hey, someone's down the street, and I don't know who they are, then can you go check on them? Do you have any sort of breakdown of the calls and maybe how they've shifted over time that you could share with us?
Are you looking for the shift from PD to maybe 311? Is that the shift that you're looking?
No, I'm just in general looking at the calls, because you're talking about like calls that you all need to respond to and sort of the increase in that number. So I guess I'm really focused on the calls you all are responding to.
The different types of calls. I know he's on here, and he did the analysis on it. So maybe I could ask Steve. We also do a monthly chief's report that breaks down a lot of the different calls. We publish that on our website, and we break that down every single month, but he did a lot of work in this area, so let me ask him to respond.
Great.
Yeah, so the, the calls, the 911 calls don't always mean, just because we get 911 calls, you're right, we can get multiple calls for one incident. So the, the numbers I gave you were actual 911 calls we received. It could have been for the same incident. But those are calls that our dispatchers all had to take. But the number of calls that I mentioned that were dispatched were individual calls. So even though we may have received four or five 911 calls on the same incident, when our officer gets dispatched to the call, it's one call. That makes sense.
That's great. And yeah, I would love to, I don't know if I can look them up on the website, but if you could send notes to me, that would be great. I would love to see more of that data and ask more, but I don't want to be redundant on information you already have online. Thank you, Deputy Chief. So then I guess my next question before I make a couple of points is, I got a series of questions from the Police Commission. I think you may have received them as well. I hope you have. About, you know, the first question is just tracking total cost breakdown of each program and service. You know, are there any transfers happening between SACPD and DCR? What is the data used to drive decisions on where money goes? What metrics are we using to define success, which is what we've been talking about? And how often do we update data? And I would love, because you, I think we were talking through, especially in the metrics piece a lot, but I think a lot of what I was hearing was like, well, response time and, you know, some case closure information. You know, number of calls responded to, and I guess I want to know if I'm missing anything there in terms of that. So I don't know if you have a fuller response you're preparing for them, if we could see that as well, or if you have something ready tonight to talk about.
No, I don't, I don't know if I can address that very specifically. Marnie's on here too, and she and Lieutenant Greg Galliano, mostly Greg, are the commission representatives now. But I know last year we were working on essentially a breakdown of budget. And Brenda, who's on the call and did a presentation, worked on that with our city management team and our finance division. The tough part about that was there were metrics that we didn't include and couldn't measure, and how the budget is designed really at the direction of our finance division. It just doesn't report out the way we were asking. So we could have taken a guess, but it wouldn't have given you the right numbers. And I hate to guess at something that important. We did do a written response, much more articulate than I just explained, but I can, we can get that reset to take a look in regards to the other questions about metrics and some of the other information. I'll definitely check with Lieutenant Galliano, who's handling those requests. But I do agree with you, we need to expand our metrics, and that's something I'm trying to do. I appreciate the council and the mayor for, and all of the city team for listening intently to a very long presentation. But that's really what we were trying to do and demonstrate tonight, that, you know, there are a lot of metrics that we can measure. I do think that we go to the standard ones because they're, they're easier to compare city to city. But you have to look at your own city and, and try and take measurements to show that you're being effective or perhaps not effective, and you need to change something. So that's something we're going to work on, and I hope to come back with more information on expanded metrics for our department in the next few months and year.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful, Chief, because I know, I think the math question on what the shift in reporting the numbers in the budget is a very complex one that we don't need to spend a ton of time on. But I think either way you add it, it looks like last year's budget was actually a pretty significant annual jump. It was, you know, I was thinking it was thirty-two million, and when I looked at all of the sources of funding, the charts that were shown by staff looked to be even, maybe even a little higher. And so I guess the question that gets asked or that I want to ask is one of the department, the department that gets the most general fund is sort of what, what was achieved with that money? You know, when we talk about giving more money, you know, my question is, okay, well, what did we get with, with the money we gave in the previous year so that we have a better understanding of, just like you said, you know, where we're hitting the mark, where we're not hitting the mark? Because I do understand and respect what some of the callers said about the business priorities and the community priorities of public safety. Absolutely. It's the number one thing that we get emailed about. But what's different, I guess, in the conversations I've had, because I think the initial thing is we need to do something about crime. And when you sit down and talk to these small businesses, overwhelmingly, they don't want to have to call the police, right? I mean, they do not want their staff to be in that position where something is happening in their coffee shop or in their restaurant where someone needs to respond and potentially someone's hurt or property has been damaged. Public safety to them doesn't just, like, doesn't mean response time, although that's obviously part of it. It means we don't want this to happen in the first place. You know, we want the mental health services. We want the drug services. We want the shelters so that you can get the camp someplace where they're somewhere. We want to not have to call. And I don't really blame PD for that, although I think how we define success and the metrics we use is important for how we invest as a city. As a city, I think our interest should be how are we driving down these incidents of crime from happening in the first place? And then as a city, and so this is, again, this is tangentially related to the PD budget, right? It's like, I don't hold PD accountable for that because they aren't staffed for that. They don't do mental health counseling. They don't, they can't do case management of families that are in crisis. You know, they can't staff or build shelters. That's not what they do. And so I guess the segue here for me is that, yes, our constituents are overwhelmingly saying they want safer communities. And that doesn't mean I want someone to respond after I've been hurt. That means that they don't want to be hurt, right? And I think overwhelmingly, when you ask those questions, I've never met a constituent who was like, oh, yeah, I'm totally cool with that crime happening. I just want someone to respond. They're like, no, I don't want that crime to happen. So this is a question for us as a city. You know, PD isn't, they're, they're doing what they're designed to do. And what they're designed to do isn't to be, you know, the social workers and the case managers for our region. And so it's just an important question, I guess, for us as a council to ask, is what does public safety look like? So the lines of what Councilmember Vang was just saying, to me, that means that they don't have to call 911 because there isn't an incident at their home or business, and they're able to do their work and their lives the way they hoped, hope to be able to do. And so it's a framing question here around how we define success. And I think it's an important food for thought for, for my colleagues as we look towards this final budget. And then I wanted to finish by just adding something our council hasn't invested in that I'm really proud of is the truth and reconciliation process that Dr. Watson has been setting up with OPAH and the consultant team that we've brought in. And I just, in that whole conversation about building trust, I think it's important to note that I don't think PD can identify that path forward on your own. I don't think that's your responsibility, Chief Lester. I really think that's something that we need to do together with the community on, on what they expect and what sort of measures would make them feel more trust in calling when they need help and working with you when, when that is something that, that they need to do. And so I just wanted to keep that on the radar, because that's coming, and make sure we don't forget that this is something we've invested in, and I don't, these are important questions. I just, I guess I don't expect you, Chief Lester, to come up with that path on your own. And I actually don't think it would be helpful for you to come up with that path on your own, because I really think we need the community to be brought into that, and that means them doing it with us. And I'm really looking forward to that process beginning so that we can have these tough conversations and hopefully come out a better city for across the board. So those are my comments and questions. Looking forward to the continued dialogue, and thank you, Chief. I was really impressed by just the team presentation here and how, how finely tuned and rehearsed everybody was with their talking points. So thank you for that. That was really well done.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. The Councilmember Shneur.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the presentation from the whole team. You know, my, and I'm not going to say anything I haven't said before, so, and we've talked about some of these things. You know, my hope would be that the budget, police budget kind of stays where it is, and for two reasons. One is, you know, we don't live in that world, and we live in a pretty tough world right now, and we need the police, and we need the police to, to help us in our community. I don't think it's an either-or situation with prevention, so I want to get back to that. And the second thing is, we are doing a lot when we think about the Department of Community Response. Thank you, Darryl. When you think about a lot of the prevention activities that we're really starting to invest in, that doesn't happen overnight. That takes some time. And so, you know, my hope is that there's this transitioning period of who And so, you know, my hope is that there's this transitioning period of who does what. And as we identified, and I think Katie was talking about this a little bit, what is the, what is the police force look like? As far as the job that they do, and I'm greatly looking forward to the day where, you know, you, you can come to the city council and say, everything is going well, we don't need more, right? Um, but I, again, I don't think that's the world that we live in right now, and, and so I'm, I'm supportive of the budget as it is. I, I do want to say thank you, um, for, you know, spending time with us a couple of weeks ago, um, for my colleagues. We had set up some small group discussions with the chief and probably about twenty community-based organizations. We had invitations out to a lot more, uh, some didn't want to come, but a, a lot did and will continue to do that. But just to talk about what they see, uh, and how to build a relationship between the community and the police and the communities that they represent. And I, I really, my thank you is listening to you talk about the role of community-based organizations and how we move forward. And understanding that if we are collaborative in nature in working with those organizations, it's going to get us way, way beyond uh putting Band-Aids on situations. Intervention, which you do and have to do, um, is our Band-Aids, they don't solve the problems, they solve the situation. And that's what we really need to change over time. So, um, I, I'm excited about the potential and the possibilities of working with you, uh, in, in how we kind of change the outlook of the police department. And I've been through quite a few chiefs here, uh, since I've been here for almost twelve years, uh, with this, uh, Vice Mayor Ashby. And, and I'm excited about this and want to help, and I think that there's a role that all of the council members and the mayor can certainly help in doing that and, and helping to make that transition over time. Um, and, and I know we have to think about this, it's what's most important today and tomorrow, uh, and what's most important over time. And, and the overtime piece to me also reflects back to the resolution that this body passed unanimously around redefining public safety. And really ensuring that prevention activities are part of that, that safe communities aren't just about the police. The police play a, an important role, but also about, uh, lifting up folks who are in that, in our communities and, and giving them responsibility and ownership around their communities. And that, and, and working with community-based organizations who are generally closer to the ground, generally know their neighborhoods better than, than we do, certainly. And so, you know, I, I, I think the presentation was really interesting and, and really worthwhile. And thinking about where we can um embed this kind of redefinition of public safety into some of the things that you're doing. Uh, I don't want it to be marginalized and sitting on the outside. I think, you know, through conversation with you and your folks and, and a lot of the community members, really understanding how we do, how do we move forward together on that? Because I, I want to hold myself and the council uh accountable for a resolution that we unanimously passed. Um, I think it's important, otherwise there's no point to it. So that's, that's my general piece I, I do, as I told you today, I would, just a couple of questions on the asset seizure fund. One of my favorite topics as, as a bunch of folks know. Um, and I was really happy to hear you say that you want to implement a process and how you decide. I guess the only thing and, and would love you to respond to this just briefly is, um, how do we make sure that, that the money that we're putting into youth programs aligns with number one, youth development framework, which, and, and you're part of the big three, and, and so I believe that that's happening. The Office of Violence Prevention, which I think is actually a good thing that it's moving under you because with, through that money, which is the ongoing money that we have for that, um, the, um, how does, how does that align with what Dr. Clavo is doing? How do, and how do we have a good process in choosing those CBOs so we're not duplicating efforts that Lindy Lane is doing? Um, but that we're you leveraging our resources in the best possible way. My only concern, and I've talked a little bit to the city manager about this, is I, I think it's really important that we also have a relationship between the Office of Violence Prevention and, and Lindy's shop, um, and what we're doing around youth development. You know, we talk about, and, and, and violence prevention is certainly young people and adults. Um, I believe all young people are at risk, and so, and the things that we need to do to be successful and the, and the attributes that young people need for themselves to be successful are the same across the board. How we get there is the difference and the strategies we use to get there. So I, I'm hoping that, you know, if, if in the org chart, there's a solid line between Dr. Clavo and you, there's also a dotted line between Dr. Cabo and, and, and our Office of Youth Development as we go forward. That's what I got, and I, I don't know if you want to respond to any of that or?
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. Actually, when Lindy came and really put the big three together and started looking at metrics for what we did um at the police department in regards to youth. Um, we kept a lot of our own metrics and, um, but we didn't, you're right, they weren't maybe necessarily aligned with some of the other departments. Right now, there's so much work and quite frankly, so much funding, um, going towards youth and prevention, and it ties directly in with what we're trying to do, which is to do a lot more on the prevention side, on the intervention side, that there's, there's no way that we shouldn't be working together. And so, um, kind of to answer one of your questions that's come up in the past, like, you know, what are you doing to try and make sure that we're leveraging resources and that we're coordinating efforts? Um, there's two parts that, one, it's that, i- it's sort of the interaction that we have between departments, making sure that's consistent, that we're communicating. Um, and that we are, we're very well aware of who's being funded and what, what we're trying to do, what is the goal for those CBOs? And supporting those CBO, CEOs, uh, from a citywide, um, perspective. The other piece of it is the framework that the city's building right now, and I know Amy Williams and Ash Rovini are working on this right now, the grant management system, which will not only just be a software system where we can see where, what everybody is doing, um, in this realm, but it's also the personal interaction because there'll be regular meetings and discussions, um, you know, guidance to be given, um, about, uh, contracting and aligning with the city, um, city guidelines and really talk about shared, um, you know, lessons and things that we've learned. So I think a big piece of it's communications, and I think having a plan moving forward, whether it's prevention intervention from the police department, whether it's youth and workforce development, um, gang intervention, that all has to be, um, a coordinated effort. So that's how I would see it working, and I think that we have a really good relationship between the departments to, to make that happen. For me, I can tell you it's a priority, it's a little bit, I guess, um, selfish of me because that's what I really want to do at the police department. So it helps me move our initiatives forward to be able to bring in partners and other city departments, um, you know, to help us do that. And, uh, and I think we've got some very good ways to leverage, uh, you know, those efforts within the city.
Great, well, the, the only thing I would disagree with you on is that there's so much money for youth right now. You know, we saw today with YPC's youth division, eight point eight million dollars, which is barely a hiccup in our consent calendar on any given week, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to characterize it like that, but if we are going to fund, we really do need, just like the question came up about the police department and what we're funding, you know, we should make sure that we're spending those dollars wisely and.
Absolutely.
Our, our communities, organizations.
Absolutely, thanks very much, thanks, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chenier, uh, Councilmember Loe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, um, Chief Lester, uh, thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. And, uh, and mega congrat, I hate to use that word, but again, a huge congratulations to you because the, the last time that I was involved in a, in a budget conversation, we're involved police department, I think it was a seven hour ordeal. So there's definitely an, an improvement because now it's only, I think it's been only an hour. So already, as, as your, you know, uh, first year, huge improvement. So I, I really appreciate that, um, you've created, um, a department that is not requiring fifty people calling in, saying the same thing, and making us stay here till midnight. So I, I'm grateful to you for that. Um, you know, I think having the Office of Violence Prevention, uh, uh, in conjunction with the police department. Uh, Master City Manager, um, I, I commend you on that, that, I think that, that's a, a great decision that was made. Because ultimately, um, that office without the PD in, involvement, I don't think it can be a, a very strong vehicle. You know, we talk about youth development a lot, and we've set aside a lot of, uh, we've set aside different types of funding for youth development. But at the end of the day, um, you know, I attended a, a, an anti-gang violence, um, event last week at Grand High School. And, and when I see these young men out there, we have to figure out what, why, what is it that's causing them wanting to join a gang? And I think if you break it down, it's due to economic reasons, um, lack of support from family, um, lack of self-confidence, so they get attracted to an organization or a setup that, uh, makes them feel good, uh, which comes down to that group identity that, that's, you know, um, we're, none of us are a big fan of versus that individual identity. So with the money that we're investing in youth development, um, and I know, um, Councilmember Chenier, um, has championed this. Is the data in to see this investment in the youth, what is it resulting in? Are we on the right page with our investment in youth? I mean, we are going through a summertime, and I, I agree with Councilmember, uh, Vang that I, I am very concerned about this summer and the safety of the youth. Um, we're doing everything in my district, trying to see how we can keep everyone busy. But at the end of the day, a land without laws creates chaos. So I hear where we need CBOs to be involved and all that. But at the end of the day, there's not a single community-based organization that can ultimately stop a crime without the police department. And I think, you know, we all wish for that day that a business owner doesn't have to call for a crime because a crime doesn't happen. We all wish for global warming to go away as well. We can wish it, but the reality of it is, as a business owner, an operator, I know without the police department, um, we would not be here today. It's plain and simple, and I think majority of the business owners, uh, that I've talked to, we feel the same way. We have the comfort knowing that when we call nine one one, we get a respond. And if that drops, we know that crime is going to increase. That's just the, the basis of the society we live in. So, um, again, Chief, I want to thank you, um, I want to thank every single, um, officer uh, in, in, in that department, we don't say it enough in this day and age, I don't know why, maybe it's not popular thing to say. But, um, I am very grateful, um, to have, uh, the police department that we have in Sacramento today. And, um, I am one hundred percent in support of, uh, this budget because I think as Councilmember Chen, Chenier alluded to, I think this is a new beginning and Councilmember Harris, and I'm very excited to see this team, we're coming together and try to make our city as safe as, as possibly we can, so thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much, um, Councilmember Loe, I'd like to make a couple of comments if I might, I, I support, uh, this budget. Um, you know, when you really look at most of the increases, most of it is contractual in nature. Um, and I'm reflecting a little bit on the comments that have been made throughout the evening about what a different kind of debate this is from maybe when I was first mayor and, uh, and even during some of the middle years. Because it's not like we're living through an easier time, uh, than we were back a couple of years ago. Um, the, the specific nature of the crises and the challenges, the context may be a little bit different, but we have some serious challenges. So what's different? I think what may be different is that, that we have real disagreements on this dais um, and in the community about the balance between investing in tr- traditional public safety and prevention and early intervention. We may be coming a lot closer to one another than we were before. Some of that may be, though Chief Han was a advocate of, 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 of community and community-based organizations. Chief Lester, I think you have a unique opportunity to, um, continue to define and redefine public safety in a way that maintains the strength of enforcement as appropriate. And at the same time, you have the opportunity to become a champion for kids and for, uh, and for genuine prevention, early intervention. And it's not an easy, uh, uh, reconciliation or balance, but it is certainly possible. Because what is it that we really are arguing about in many ways? Um, we're not really arguing about taking away. What we're arguing about is where do we spend the next new incremental dollar? That's what, that's what budgets largely, uh, come down to. And I think it is a healthy debate, because while, um, wh- while improving the traditional definition of public safety with a new chief who believes in community-oriented policing, who believes in connection with that community, um, requests for increases need to be strictly scrutinized, but can be supported, um, where, where the right case is made. But that doesn't mean that every new increment, every part of every new incremental dollar goes into that, because we have to balance. And, a- and, you know, Councilmember Lalo, you ask, well, where's the data to support the, um, the effectiveness of intervention, uh, or investing in CBOs and youth intervention? Well, there's a lot of data that can tell you a lot of different things. Um, there's a, i- it's hard to correlate cause and effect, even in terms of crime. We've got a great police department, and we've got a smart police department, yet crime has gone up. Is that the fault of the police department or, no? It, it's a, a number of circumstances that are happening in our society, frankly, that are, um, causing a, an increase nationwide. I also think we sometimes forget here that, no matter how we decide to budget here, um, we need the help of others if we're going to achieve a safer city. And I want to ask this question, I don't know whether you know the answer, uh, to this, Chief Lester, but and if you don't, uh, maybe we could report back here because it has nothing to do with the city, it has to do with the county of Sacramento. As I understand it, the county has began its own version of DCR, our Department of Community Response, Alternative Nine One One Response. But the difference between their alternative response and all of our alternative response is they have tens of millions of dollars of mental health resources. And that among their team of outreach workers in their version of, uh, of DCR, um, are trained mental health workers that are going out there on a regular basis. And I, I believe, but this is what I want to ask, that their new approach is being implemented exclusively outside of the city of Sacramento, in the unincorporated area and in other, a- and in other cities other than Sacramento within the county. Is that true? Um, is that true? And if it is, wouldn't having a, a strong county mental health presence in our city assisting you and your officers in addressing the various situations that you encounter involving mental health crisis, psychiatric crisis, whether it's the unsheltered homeless or other situations? Would that add me a, a big help to you?
Um, Mayor Steinberg, I don't know if that's true or not, I'm sure Bridget would have better insight because she works in that realm. But to answer your second question, it'd hugely helpful, we really lack the ability to serve people, and I know that DCR is challenged with that as well. We just don't have the, the resources that we need to address mental. We just don't have the resources that we need to address mental health at a lower level or in crisis. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, it would be great if we got to a point where you didn't have people in mental crisis. And unfortunately, that's something the police department, you know, we come to contact with people in that situation a lot. And if we can prevent that, if we can divert people from hospitals and emergency rooms and truly give them psychiatric treatment, that would be great for the city and the county. I wholly support that.
Right, but I think I'd like, if I could, from you or the city manager, to talk to your county counterparts and see whether or not they are implementing their version of alternative response at all within the city of Sacramento, at all within the city. Because our DCR by definition cannot be primarily mental health oriented. We don't do mental health. We don't have those resources. Bridget Dean is, you know, performing miracles every day, putting together teams of people with a wide variety of qualifications. But we're not mental health providers. And so do you know the answer to that question, Mr. City Manager?
No, but I will follow up with the county exact. That answer can't be right because we are the largest city in the county, and it would surprise me if they're not providing the same level of service within the city that they do outside.
I saw it frankly on a piece of campaign mail that came through over the last couple of weeks, that assertion. And so I wanted to raise it because, you know, and here's the reason that I raised it. Councilmember Lowey, you know, you talk about data, and what you're really asking for is cause and effect. And I will maintain that without that access to those crucial mental health and substance abuse resources, without access to those in an urgent and aggressive way in our city, that our police department cannot achieve every result that we want it to achieve because they're plain not equipped to. And so I know, you know, sensitive, I know it's a sensitive question. I mean, I'm asking, it's just a question. It's not an accusation. It's a question. Does the county's new DCR program that involves mental health outreach workers include the city of Sacramento? And if so, what are the amount of resources that are being put towards trying to help you, Chief Lester, and DCR and our city family, address the ever-growing tent encampment problem and the other issues of mental health and psychiatric crisis that you and your officers and Bridget's team confront every single day? Thank you. You'll get back to me on that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will.
Thank you. I just want to finish up with this one point, and that is about the incremental dollar. We all have our jobs to do here. And it is the job of the police chief, of course, to advocate for a strong and robust police budget. And I do support, by the way, the Office of Violence Prevention at this point in time under the direction of the police chief, because I think that will create better synergy. But that is a different question, as Jay Chenier raises constantly, of whether or not we are investing enough resources into primary prevention that really does not involve the police, that doesn't involve law enforcement, that simply involves increasing, in whatever way we can, that $8.8 million Yipsey Youth set aside that we heard about today so that both the city and the qualifying CBOs can provide more enrichment, more guidance, more prevention and early intervention to more young people? Because we want that too. And so what we wrestle with as council members and as mayors here and as city professionals is how to balance that. And that's where the tension comes in, of course, but it's healthy tension. And the more we can do that together, I think the better city we will have. Councilmember Valenzuela?
You just reminded me, Mayor, of a request I made last week that I'd like to reiterate this week, which is that some of those violence prevention CBOs are working on ideas and proposals right now that I would love for us to be able to hear, including, I think it's aimed at us and the county, looking for resources. Just to say, I mean, these are some of the same CBOs. I know we've had a lot of talk tonight about how this utopian vision of not needing to call police just isn't attainable, but some of these same CBOs helped us have two years of no youth homicides after we had an incredible spurt with the youngest shooter at the time, I believe being 13 years old, before these groups got engaged. There is a reason, there are people in our community who are capable of stopping the guns from leaving a house and going to the street and shooting somebody. And I believe we need to engage them, just as the mayor said. And they are working on something in light of the mass shooting downtown and the status shootings that we've had since that time across the city. And I just really love to make sure that they had a voice at some point before we finalize our budget.
You know, Councilmember Valenzuela, I think that would fit in nicely when the chief comes back with the strategic plan, and we're here about the workforce in the report from Yipsey. I think we could hear that all in the same night.
Okay, is that going to be before we finalize the budget?
What's the date, Chief Lester?
We haven't decided on a date for the presentation.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that before the budget gets adopted, even if we have to push adoption, because I think it is important that we hear it all.
I think so. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, members, thank you. That completes our agenda for this evening. Is there public testimony?
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt Sandra Talbot, Chief Assistant City Attorney? I think item 17 was an action item. Asking for a vote.
Then we need a motion on the action item. If somebody wants to move item 17, please.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's moved. Second, let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes. Now we are done with the agenda for the evening, with the exception of public testimony on items not on the agenda.
And Mr. Mayor, do you have some board and commission appointments to read into the record to the Active Transportation? Thank you, to the Active Transportation Commission, Melissa Harris, to the Parks and Community Enrichment Commission, Gordon Liu. And I have three hands raised to make public comment for matters not on the agenda.
Okay, let's hear from the public, please.
Thank you. The first is Ms. Sahar.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for hearing me. I probably should have raised my hand sooner. But I really wanted to talk to you guys about the homeless population that has overrun our city. I've been living in Midtown Sacramento for six years. And in the past two years, I have watched not only my beautiful neighborhood, but the beautiful city of Sacramento deteriorate. I have now found myself living in constant fear. The homeless have built tent camps. They do drugs on the property. They break into our cars and our homes, and they trash our neighborhood. But most importantly, they are attacking women. In the past month, I have been followed three times while walking my dog in broad daylight. I have come out to take my dog out to a man barricaded in the hallway by my front door smoking crack. A mother was attacked at McKinley Park at 10:00 a.m., putting her kid in her car. A woman was attacked last week at the Capitol while going for a run during the day. I am sure that this will happen to me very soon. I have called the police and reported to 311 more times in the last two months than I ever have in my entire life. The police almost never show up. They always say they are too busy. I'd like to ask you all, have you ever went for a walk with your dog during the day and worried that you were going to be raped? Have you ever been followed by drug addicts who won't leave you alone? Have you ever called the police to come help you from being attacked as a woman, and they were too busy to show up? We are all taxpaying citizens. What are we doing to help the situation? How many women need to be attacked before that something is done about this? Because when I am sexually assaulted, because it is bound to happen at this point, I will have a case to not only sue the city, but law enforcement because they are not doing anything to keep us safe. And I'll tell you that the news headline will read, "Second Grade Teacher Raped by the Homeless After She Called 911 Fifteen Times." Please, please, please do something to solve this problem. It is very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kate Wilkins.
Hi, City Council. This is Kate Wilkins, 350 Sacramento. Would have called in earlier at your 2:00 p.m. meeting, but we did not know that climate staffing would be on the agenda. We saw that supplemental information at about 4:00 p.m. this afternoon. It was under the SIP agenda item for the 2:00 p.m. meeting. And there was not any indication that this would be discussed today or in our conversation with city staff before that. As I said, no reasonable notice, not really a meaningful attempt to let advocates know. So none of us are really up to speed on the conversation. We'll have to watch the recording. So I'd request that climate staffing or that supplemental information be discussed on May 24th. We'd love to be able to give our public comments and be more prepared to speak. Didn't know we would. That would be addressed today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jennifer Holden.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Good to talk to you again. A couple of weeks ago, a neighborhood coalition made up of neighborhoods from every single council district in the city wrote to all of you and requested a response. I believe we're still waiting for a response on that. We had five requests, but there are two I'm going to especially raise tonight, especially given the topics we've been discussing. The first one is the need for in-person city council meetings again. It's time. Most other local governments are doing that, but not this local government. Please reopen the doors and offer, say, a hybrid model. The second one is a request for greater notice on staff reports mentioned items, especially when the staff reports are more than 15 pages long. Having them released to the public on Thursday, when the meeting's Tuesday, really only gives us a Monday afternoon and Tuesday morning to try to contact any city staff to get things clarified before we come to the meeting together. So we would like a much longer runtime instead of the minimum the Brown Act requires. I know of other local governments in other parts of the state that allow, you know, 10 or 14 days. If citizenry is to participate, we need time to read the documentation so we can participate. And we are not being given enough time to read, prepare, and be at these meetings with you and provide you with well-informed feedback. We're always a day late, a dollar short, trying to catch up with the city staff so that we can participate in the process. Please help us participate in the process. Reopen city council doors for meetings and give us more than the minimum required by the Brown Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker tonight is Francine Mata.
Hi, my name is Francine Mata, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Sacramento Low Rider Commission. This goes out to our city council. I didn't recall us receiving an invite for the 20-plus community groups that met, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, one of the representatives said. And just, you know, to put everyone on notice as we had at the beginning of the year. The Sacramento Low Rider Commission, you know, we're requesting, again, we've already had 40 meetings, that you guys reach out to us when there's gang prevention, community organizations, whatnot, that are requesting for help in the community. As you know, like I said, with the police chief, are people that have been appointed to address these concerns that have been happening in the community. You know, it hasn't stopped, and how long have they been on this panel and board? I think you guys need to reach out to the groups that have been doing this all their lives and haven't solicited money from the city. You know, we're a lot of, we do food drives, backpack drives, water drives, shoe drives. We have several events each week and bring out thousands of family members, family events. As Lowly said, you know, during the community events, it is family engagement, and there's always a peaceful environment. We have vendors. We bring business to the city of Sacramento. So I'm asking that you guys repeal our ordinance. And you want to build trust, I would say repeal the ordinance with no conditions. It's a civil rights injustice, and start working with the lowrider community as we've all have been doing this in a positive way for well over 40, 50-plus years. I want to thank our community for always going above and beyond for our culture and to keep it alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one additional speaker, Matthew Winters.
Yes, hi, hi, City Council and Mayor, Matthew Winters, District 7. Just wanted to follow up on the previous commentary about the lowrider community. And I felt I should speak about this as well. I am not a member of the lowrider community. However, I am an advocate for their culture, for the work that they do and their recreation and just the work and family-oriented efforts that they do to provide a positive group in that community, which has struggled with poverty, which has struggled with gangs and such things like that. We talk about how groups may be a negative thing. I think really what the city council needs to do is look towards positive avenues, positive groups that are recreating and point folks to those communities and build up those communities. I do think it is an injustice that there are still ordinances that single out, you know, cultures that are typically singled out and laws are created against their cultural traditions. The places that they typically inhabit are typically taken away, and they're unable to carry on those traditions and pass them down to their family. Please listen to the lowrider community. Please push them as a positive avenue away from some of the other negative things that affect those communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you. Let's hear from the members of the city council for ideas and questions, for items not on the agenda. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have three announcements. One is tomorrow at Stanford Settlement from 10 till 4 p.m., there will be a vaccination clinic. The Gardenlands Northgate Neighborhood Association Scholarship Award Program deadline has been extended to Friday, May 20th. And for more information, you can go to gnna.info. But here's the big one. We're doing Pops in the Park again this year after two-year hiatus, and I'm very excited about this. In my entire tenure, I've been putting on these Pops of the Park shows. We're only going to have two in East Sac this year and one in South Matomas. On May 18th, the big crush is going to be at McKinley Park, the newly renovated McKinley Park. And I'm very excited about that. This is a big band that I think is, well, to make a pun, is going to crush it. And then on the 25th of June, did I say May last time? These are both in June, so June 18th and June 25th at East Portal Park. My old friend Rick Estrin, Rick Estrin and the Night Cats are going to finalize our show, our last show in East Sacramento. This is a band that's been around as long as I've lived in Sacramento. Rick Estrin is nothing short of tremendously amusing and dynamic. He's got a great band, so I'm really excited about these shows. And then in September, we're going to put on a show in South Matomas. That would be September 17th. All of these shows start at 6 p.m. They're all on Saturday. And hip service is going to be playing in South Matomas. And I encourage people from all over the city to come to all these shows. I know that there's a lot of pent-up demand to have a great time in our beautiful parks. These are probably going to be pretty well populated. So I encourage everybody to be fully vaccinated before they come to the shows. But this is kind of my last hurrah as a council member doing Pops in the Park, and I'm super excited about it. We're going to have a great time, so gather up your families and your picnic and come down to the parks because we're going to really, we're going to really have a great time. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you so much. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have two announcements, or three announcements. We also are going to have-
We also are going to have, we're going to be having a concert series in South Sac, but as soon as we get closer to the dates, I'll make sure to announce that. But just two major announcement. One, I just wanted to share that Team Hard and Hustle has completed six of our seven listening sessions. So really appreciate all our small businesses in South Sac, from our neighborhoods, our youth, and our unhoused neighbors. Just really grateful for everyone who's showed up, provided lots of amazing, great insight. But we do have one more session left, one more session remaining, and it's actually virtual, so I don't want anyone to miss out on it. If you haven't had a chance to participate in our Dream Big Listening Session on Thursday, May 26th from 5:30 to 7:00, you can RSVP. We will be having our last listening session, and the one and only Mayor Steinberg will be joining us as well. You can RSVP at hardandhustle.org backslash listen. If you're watching this and you have not yet participated, please do. This is a virtual one. All of them has been in person, but our last one will be virtual. And then my last announcement is that, as you know, the Measure You Advisory Committee is implementing the initiative regarding participatory budgeting, and $500,000 of it is set aside for South Sacramento, portion of it in my district, and Councilmember Chenier, and also Councilmember Garrett's district. But our office is actually hosting, with the Measure You Committee, a brainstorming listening session for collection of ideas. And so really encouraging folks to come out. It's this Thursday at Luther Burbank in the Cafeteria. That's 3,500 Florin Road, 5:30 to 7:00. And you can RSVP at hardandhustle.org backslash PB to RSVP. We will be providing food. It should be a fun event and really encouraging the community to come out and enjoy. Join us, learn more about the PB process, and also submit your ideas for South Sacramento. And so those are my two announcements, Mayor, and thank you so much.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, councilmember. Who is next? Councilmember, is she Valenzuela? Jennings, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harris, are you up again?
Yes, I had one brief follow-up.
Okay, let's go to the others and, okay.
Oh, I am sorry, Mayor. I raised my hand for the adjourned memory.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
No, for the adjourned memory, so.
Well, I have for the adjourned memory. I'm sorry. That's correct. Thank you for reminding me. Okay. Laloie Jennings Ashby, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I wanted to announce an exciting event. We have this Sunday on the 22nd from 11:00 A.M. to 3:00 P.M. I would like to invite everyone out to our Bikes on the Boulevard. This is an event for all ages and experience with bicycles. So whether you're a beginner or a committed rider, there will be something for you. Events will include bike shows, prizes, music, yoga, and food. We will also have free bike repairs, and there will be free helmet giveaways. There'll be tons of activities for youth. It's going to be a lot of fun, interactive events to celebrate Bike Month. So I encourage all of you to come out and have some fun. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jennings, Councilman Jennings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Laloie, I like that concept of bikes on the Boulevard, and I think you'll get a great turnout, and I think it'll be a great time for the community out there. So you might see me out there on my bike doing that as well. But anyway, in District 7, I'd like to invite the community to, because you've asked me all year long, when are we going to bring back trucks and such? And that's, we're going to have our first trucks and such on Friday, the 20th of May. It'll start at 5:00 o'clock, and it'll go until about 9:30 and 9:00, until you guys eat all the food, or you decide it's time to go home and go to bed. So we're going to have a good time. I'll let you know all the different, what the such is when you get out there. But you know it's going to be wonderful food trucks. So come on out there with a hungry appetite, get to meet your community again, and come on out and enjoy the trucks and such this Friday, the 20th, from 5:00 until about 9:00. And then on the next day, on Saturday, the 21st, starting at 9:00 in the morning, we're going to have a volunteer cleanup day at Wrightmouth Park, right there off of Gloria and Riverside. And so that huge park out there, we're going to go out there and do some cleanup. We've just have been really, really great volunteers. They come out every single time to help us do cleanup, and I know we're going to have a great turnout as well. So if you want to make a difference in your community, come on out for the volunteer cleanup day at Wrightmouth Park on Saturday at 9:00 A.M. And that's what's happening in District 7.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I have four things. The first thing is that several of you today during the parks budget discussion brought up the aquatics facility, and I suppose this is a good problem to have. It is really, really busy. And so I want to thank our park staff because it's just been really crazy. And I want to take this moment to tell the public that next week, the city of Sacramento's Parks Department switches from their spring schedule to their summer schedule, which is good because right now rec swims are on Saturdays and Sundays, and they'll go to every day of the week, which I really help, helps us move the crowd across the whole week because we are struggling mightily under how many people are coming to the aquatic facility. I laughed when Jay asked if we could figure out what zip codes they're coming from. Be careful what you ask for. I have a sneaking suspicion it will be a lot outside of the city of Sacramento and all over Sacramento. One of the reasons I know that is because the parking lot is completely full at all times as well. So I'll be interested to see those numbers, too, Councilmember Chenier. But I wanted to take a minute to just thank our aquatics team. It's quite a task, you guys, that they put together every year to hire all these seasonal employees and then get them out there and get them, get the pools going, and then deal with all that it takes to run all of that. So I want to thank them for that. And then, secondly, Mayor, you missed this. I don't know where you were, but we opened some amazing footsaw courts this week. And I wanted you to come out there so you can play me in footsaw, because we're both so good at footsaw. Would have been amazing. Sorry. Sac Republic was out there. They helped us build these courts. They're phenomenal. They're in Tanzanite Park, which I suppose next year will be in District 3, but for now, still in District 1. It's a beautiful park, and these are really nice new amenities. So if you're into footsaw, if you like that, come on, check it out. I know Councilmember Garrett loves footsaw because his Parks Commissioner was helping my Parks Commissioner work on this project with a lot of the folks in the community. So Councilmember Garrett, we got that finally open this week, and it was, it's awesome. You will love it if you get a chance. Obviously, I know you're busy, but maybe in the summer. Bring the kiddos out there with a ball and check it out. It's really fun. And then on that note, I want to just take a minute to plug this. You know, these footsaw courts, the ones we built in Matomas are on new dirt, but these are a really good opportunity for renovations. And I know, you know, that Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Vang have a couple of spots in mind. One in particular that's close to their heart in Detroit neighborhood, where there are old tennis courts that are not usable. They're not actually tennis courts. They've been overrun by weeds. There's no nets or anything. This is a perfect reuse. So, City Manager, I want to ask you to take a look at, across the city, particularly in neighborhoods like the Detroit neighborhood or District 2 or portions of District 3, although we've done this in District 3. Steve Kohn did this in Northgate. They put in the first footsaw court. Councilmember Garrett's district, I bet, has some, some old tennis courts that could be redone. I bet Councilmember Chenier does, too. But let's take a look and see where there might be some. And let's start with that Detroit neighborhood, and let's figure out what it would take. Because they're really, it's expensive if you do it from dirt like I just did, but it's really not that expensive if you do it from an old tennis court and you make it new. Mayor, you could put these footsaw courts all around your city and take spaces that are currently not being used, and for about $30,000 at each spot, renovate into something that is a very cool, really new, fun way to get kids outdoors. It's dynamic. I know Councilmember Garrett probably could tell you even more about the sport because I know he's been really involved with it. But this is something we could do. It doesn't cost a lot. City Manager, where we need your help is, there's a relationship with Sac Republic. Well, they'll help us do this, but there are dynamics around the ownership and the costs that we need you to work through, and it can't really just be delegated to staff. So I'd like to ask you to do an inventory search of where we have old tennis courts that could be renovated for either footsaw or pickleball or whatever that council member would like. It is not expensive, but we need to have a plan for how to do it. And I, I'd like to take this moment to just say that. I know there's other champions for it on here, so I'm not trying to own that. I'm just letting you guys know. I, I think that's something that could be brilliantly and easily done over a year or two, and it's absolutely transformational for those communities and really fun to see the kids. And then the last thing I have here, too, City Manager, are you good on that one?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, and this one's for you as well, and this is also a little outside of my lane, forgive me. But there's plenty of money for this, so I don't need this to go on a log or research. I just need you, City Manager, to direct your team to do this for us and use funding that has already been allocated by this council to do so. Councilmember Laloie and I would like drawings, please. We'd like renderings for the Del Paso Heights Library. I'm asking officially, City Manager, please ask your team to provide those drawings for us. We are not going to wait for whatever umpteen million steps there are ahead of us. We promise the community of Del Paso Heights a library. Councilmember Laloie has been dogged in trying to push this forward. As you know, I worked on it a little bit before he got here, and I feel really strongly that we should already have those renderings in hand by now. So on behalf of both of us, I'm asking you, City Manager, to please ask your team to produce those as quickly as possible.
I will follow up with the team to see where we are on this, and I'll get back to both of you. Okay?
We, we have both done so repeatedly, which has led us to this point. I don't want you to think I started here. Okay, thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, you had one more thing, and then we're going to close with an adjourned memory from Councilmember Valenzuela.
Mr. Mayor, I've got my hand up first. I'm sorry, I didn't see her. Go ahead. Councilmember Harris can finish up his comment.
Jeff, you had one more, and then I'll get to.
Yeah, this is, this is brief. Going back to Pops in the Park, I'm very excited that for the artwork this year, we were able to secure a piece from the late and very great Sacramento, Wayne Tebow. So it's just a really special thing to celebrate our 30th year of Pops. And you'll be able to see this artwork in Inside East Sacramento, probably on the Matomas Buzz. But we wanted to do a real tribute to this great Sacramento, and I want to thank Cecily Hastings for helping us procure this piece of art and really exciting turn of events. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Geta, was yours the same adjourned memory as Councilmember Valenzuela?
No, I have actually some comments here as well, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Why don't you make the comments, and I'm going to let Councilmember Valenzuela close for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, this Thursday, I want to thank my sister's house. We, the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center, and representatives from our police department here, and also the DA's office will be hosting our Domestic Violence Forum at the George Simp Community Center from 6:00 to 7:00 P.M. Again, this is an issue that we want to, it's been prevalent during the pandemic. It has increased by over, well over 200%. We discussed, you know, this issue early on in our council, and I want to thank our council for funding, support services to keep these organizations going at the beginning of the pandemic. But this is still an issue that is, unfortunately and sadly, because of the recent tragedies, again, something we can't let fall behind, and it tends to happen until something tragic happens. So we encourage folks to come and participate. This is an opportunity for the public to, you know, ask questions, to also give their input, and for us to move forward as a community to really tackle the issue of domestic violence. So we'll hope folks will join us at 6:00 P.M. this Thursday, May 19th, at the George Simp Community Center. And then also, if you can't make the Thursday event on participatory budgeting, with Councilmember Vang, you can join our office over at, again, at the George Simp Community Center. On Saturday, May 21st at 9:30 A.M., we're going to have our Measure You Commissioners there. We're going to have some coffee and conversation about how we can support South Sac in the participatory budgeting process. So join us there. And then also that Saturday, May 21st, and Sunday, May 22nd, from 11:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M. in Tahoe Park, the Tahoe PTA, Wide Open Walls. We're going to be hosting the Multicultural Art Festival at Tahoe Elementary, where we're going to be painting all the walls in that entire school there. So that school is going to be transformed completely because of the Wide Open Walls program and the mural programs in that area. Finally, this Saturday at 8:00 A.M. at Mobeta Restaurant on Stockton Boulevard and 13th Avenue. Come and join us. It's the Stockton Boulevard Cleanup Day. We work out with the Stockton Boulevard Partnership, all of our community members, to participate. So those are the announcements, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll stop there for adjourned memory.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mayor, pretend, Councilmember Valenzuela, I will conclude the meeting tonight with you and adjourned memory of a prominent Sacramento who we've lost, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will say, one of the great joys I've had since taking our, taking office has been to work with Latino and Chicano arts organizations and artists across Sacramento and among the legends in our local community, and there are many. I can honestly say that I don't think there's anyone more respected or beloved than Esteban Villa. And Esteban left us on Sunday. He was 91 years old. He was born into Larry, just a short drive from where I grew up, and was co-founder of the Royal Chicano Air Force, or R.C.A.F., here in Sacramento. And he uses art not just to advance important social justice campaigns, like the rights of farmworkers, but also he did so much to mentor and support young people and artists in our community. I have to say that since he passed, my social media feed has been full of stories from people that I didn't even know knew Esteban, and stories of him sitting down with them to try to inspire them, to try to get them to stay in school, to encourage them in their arts and their vision, and their gifts for the community. He was just so much to so many in big and so, in small ways, that just matters so much, so much to our city. His lifetime of work made an immeasurable difference in our community and in Sacramento and in the state of California, honestly, and beyond. And we're all better because Esteban was, was here. I first met Esteban in 2017 and was really honored when he invited me to witness him receive an honorary doctorate in fine arts from Sacramento State this last April, a celebration that unfortunately had to be postponed due to his health issues. So I want us all to send our deepest condolences to all who knew and loved Esteban during this difficult time as we adjourn in his amazing memory, and just to say rest in power, Esteban. We wish we had more time with you, but we're so grateful for the time we had with you and all you gave to, to our city. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That was, that was out of the question. Councilmember Geta, did you want to say something about?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Esteban Villa, man, what a powerful person. And, you know, as, even as a student at Sac State, him, Jose Montoya, you know, Professor Favela, all of them, and, you know, Panishi, and all of them have been huge icons for us. Losing Esteban, you know, recently was, was, was challenging and difficult. You know, he had left a, such a legacy in motivating young people, including people like myself, like Supervisor Phil Serna. So many of us, you know, who were involved in student activism and even continued, you know, the, his recent work, bringing attention to culture, the murals, not only at Southside Park, but at the Golden One Center, talking about, you know, the importance of maintaining our, our, our culture. The Mariposa, the Monarch, you know, which also comes from, you know, the area where my family's from. I had a chance to, to sit down with Esteban back in last fall and, you know, play, he loved to play his guitar. He loved to, you know, play his, also his blues along with his little, with his rolas. And, you know, and at his age, even still was, was very quick-witted and started to, you know, use inspiration any moment he had to find light and energy. And his artwork, when you look at his artwork, it's always so powerful. The colors, the, in it, they're always bringing out this, this level of energy. And so the, all to say that, you know, it was, I felt fortunate to be able to find some time to be with them. You know, my condolences to his, his children and his family, who cares so much about him. So, you know, rest in power. Again, another Sac State professor, veteran, you know, someone who was committed to Sacramento and wanted, decided to live in South Sacramento, you know. He could have lived anywhere, and wanted to live in South Sacramento, off of Metta View in that area. off of Metta View in that area, and wanted to be, continue to be part of the community. So, Mr. Mayor, you know, it's with a great, great sadness that we say goodbye, but only in this phase in life to Esteban Villa.
Thank you very much. In memory of Esteban Villa, rest in peace, and thank you for your great contribution to Sacramento and to the world. We are adjourned.